I would like to now call the Powhatan County Board of Supervisors meeting to order. If you can, please rise. Mr. Byerly, if you can lead us in the pledge, and Mr. Williams, if you can lead us in the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Dear my Father, thank you for another wonderful day in Powhatan, and for all thy many blessings. Amen.
Any requests to postpone or amend tonight's agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
On the consent agenda, I would like to pull eight F, as F as in Frank, and we would move that, I think, to all business, and it would become 11 C.
Okay.
So pull eight F and move it to 11 C.
Okay. Anything else? I move we approve the agenda as amended. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, county administrator updates.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Last month, we let you know that the Government Finance Officers Association awarded Powhatan with a certificate of excellence for financial reporting for fiscal year 20, in particular, our annual financial report. This month, we were notified that our budget document prepared for fiscal year 22, which is our current fiscal year, also received a government finance officer's distinguished budget presentation awards. Once again, I'd like to extend a big high five of appreciation to Ms. Charlotte Schubert, our Director of Finance, and her associate's Budget Manager, Thomas Voe, and Accountant Carrie Delaney. Nice job, finance team, once again. This team of Superficers worked together, did a great job on the budgets last year. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Our second item under the county administrator's update is a proclamation for the Anti-Litter Council, and I'd like to invite Ms. Kay Bartlett and Ms. Mimi Zalletti. Let me see, make sure I pronounce it right.
Well, we invite the whole Anti-Litter Council up here. Everybody, come on up.
Exactly. Tonight, we have a proclamation for Litter Awareness Month, and I'd like to read that for our team here at the Anti-Litter Council. Whereas, begin the during the month of January, a new annual effort by Powhatan County Anti-Litter Council includes self-directed projects, organized cleanups, and educational opportunities, all aimed at beautifying Powhatan County, raising awareness of environmental issues, and ultimately changing behavior. And whereas items tossed on the roads cause distractions that can lead to dangerous crashes and require roadside cleanup operations that put maintenance workers in dangerous situations. And whereas the Virginia Department of Transportation spends $3.5 million annually, a total of $14.4 million over the past four years on litter removal in Virginia. And whereas the 2021 Virginia General Assembly increased the litter tax payment for businesses and also increased the fine for those who litter. Whereas, Powhatan Anti-Litter Council program partners and volunteer groups have come together to call attention to the Don't Trash Powhatan Anti-Littering Campaign, which is part of a regional effort called Don't Trash Central Virginia, asking motorists and residents to keep road sides clean by making the right choice to properly dispose of trash. And whereas, a clean county sends a positive message to potential new businesses considering Powhatan locations and existing businesses considering expansion within the county. And whereas, therefore be proclaimed that we, the board, in order to further strengthen existing anti-litter recycling efforts hereby enthusiastically support the continued efforts of the Powhatan County Anti-Litter Council consisting of both public and private partners, and pledge support and ongoing basis to the council. And further endorse the purpose of the council to ensure an attractive and litter-free community, supportive of clean environment, and equality development. This resolution is prepared for the Board of Supervisors on December 20, 2021. Again, we thank you for your efforts. With that, if we could have a motion to effect to pass that resolution.
Start movement.
Second, any questions or comments on the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys. Thank you for your support. Thank you all. Now, moving on to our first public comment period, anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. If you are speaking individually, you have three minutes, or as for a group, you have five minutes.
Good evening, members of the board. Sally Bays, 476 Bell Bridge Circle. I am here this evening to address the Resolution 2021-57 pertaining to the proposed former formal censorship of Mr. Bill Cox. When I first spotted this item on the agenda, I was shocked and could not imagine what might have led to this. Until this appeared, I was truly in the Christmas spirit. With the Powhatan Christmas parade and the lighting of the community Christmas tree, the stage was set until suddenly the Grinch appeared. Our Christmas spirit has been stolen by the presentation of this resolution. What is the leadership of this board thinking to propose an action so extreme, one that is reserved for only the most serious criminal offenses? Surely, no criminal behavior was evident in the November 22 meeting. What is evident is the expression of an opinion and perspective contrary to that of the Chair of the Board. Residents do not nor should not expect unanimity of opinion within the Board on every issue. Freedom of speech is one of the most precious constitutional rights, and this proposed censorship restricts this right in the most serious manner. During the past two years, our society has been battling a, quote, "cancel culture" mentality on many different fronts, but for the leadership of this board to attempt to cancel the expression of differing points of view is shocking, unprofessional, embarrassing to the county, and totally unacceptable from multiple perspectives. What would the outcome of an affirmative vote be? By removing Mr. Cox from all committee and other assignments, the constituents in District Four would be disenfranchised since he would be disallowed from carrying out his official duties. Secondly, an affirmative vote would have a chilling effect on all future discussion of issues within the Board. Discussion and respectful expression of differing opinions is healthy. Furthermore, the majority of this county just voted for our Governor-elect Glenn Youngkin, who clearly stated throughout his campaign that his intent is to bring Virginians together, not to perpetuate divisions that are destructive and unproductive in the end. In closing, I would urge this Board to reject this resolution. Thank you.
Good evening, Supervisors. Terry King Stratton, 2940 Lake Louise Drive. It is never easy to admit when you're wrong. It is even harder to have to stand up here and do it. But thankfully, I was raised by an amazing mama that taught me to admit my mistakes and correct them when and if I possibly could. After speaking at the November 22 meeting about my recollection of the September 27 meeting, I decided to watch that meeting again. After watching the video, I realized that I misspoke. Whereas I was correct on my discussion points and how that discussion played out, there was no motion, there was no second, and there was no vote taken on the Christmas tree, which makes Mr. Cox's comments at the last meeting about Mr. Byerly and Mrs. Karmack voting against the Christmas tree even more appalling, unethical, and unprofessional. I do owe all of you an apology for misspeaking about a vote that did not happen. I do, however, stand by the rest of my comments on November 22, especially about the ones about my disappointment in Mr. Cox and about him deliberately trying to mislead the public four different times. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Terry Adcock, 5719 Carisville Road. I have four points to bring up about Supervisor Cox's proposed censure. You're not punishing Supervisor Cox. You're punishing the citizens in District Four that he represents. When you strip Supervisor Cox of all of his duties, then the citizens in his districts are not fairly represented. You are punishing the AFD Committee. I am a member, and as the acting board member, Supervisor Cox has done a wonderful job. The committee was pretty much nonexistent. We have brought it back to life with Supervisor Cox's help. In my research, I found only one supervisor in Virginia that was censored in the last five years. That was for racist remarks. If what Supervisor Cox did was so wrong, why was he not called out of order, not once during the board meeting in November that this occurred? There should be no punishment because no crime occurred. At the very least, the last item should be stricken so Supervisor Cox can represent District Four. You're opening up a can of worms so that any time one board member thinks that something, another board member says is incorrect, they can ask for a censure. Put your personal feelings aside. Citizens of Powhatans want and deserve equal representation. Vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thomas E. Berry, 2740 Winterbrook Court, Powhatan, Virginia 23139. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I want to speak on the proposed censure of Mr. William Cox's Resolution 2021-57. I do not believe the censure should be carried forward. This resolution seems to be brought about due to difference of personality, views, and opinion, all from the passion of topic, not egregious behavior. The censure does stem from the September 27 meeting and the discussion on the Christmas Tree Park. The proposal was a combined project that was split, and during that discussion, it was separated, and there was a general agreement of three board members that would support the tree components, but not the park itself. This was supported by the other two, from what I understand. The parties on the board have strong views on the topics they have debated. You've all debated in a heated manner at one time or another. This heated manner, as I see it, is due to passion about processes followed and what is believed that the citizens want. Unfortunately, this heated manner that has ensued has taken away from the professionalism of the board business, and I would hope that all can come to a resolution in a positive manner rather than the proposed resolution and censure. It is my belief that the censure of a board member should be carried forth when egregious incidents occur. Passionate discussion and what was said does not rise to the occasion or support the charges, and in my opinion, is incorrect. The carrying forward of this resolution could impact others since a precedent is set, a precedent that allows censure for heated discussion. In addition, I would also be concerned that carrying the resolution forward would negatively impact the citizens he represents by not having the representation on boards, commissions, and work groups he is involved with. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, I'm here to speak about the convenient center. Do you prefer for me to make my comment now or later?
You would need to wait that later when we're having that public hearing. Thank you. Anyone else? Do we have anybody on Zoom? Oh, I'm sorry.
Kristy Elliott, 3471 Anderson Highway. Speaking on the censure of Mr. Cox, this sounds like a small thing y'all are picking on him for, but it's a documented thing. I think it's the tip of the iceberg of other things that have gone by that were not addressed. For me, one example would be a Board of Supervisor meeting while I was here, and there was a, I felt a verbal attack against Vicki Hurt with Mr. Cox during that meeting, which I could not believe carried on as long as it did. As far as I'm concerned, if he cannot represent us, then he shouldn't have the seat. That would be his choice, what he chose to do for District Four. And that's pretty much how I feel about that. I don't feel like he represents me anyway. I've made that vocal all along. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Robert Powers, 2792 Spencer Wood, and I come up here tonight not to throw any stones or rocks or complain about a thing. I instead spent about two hours today going through 155 pages of an agenda package that you all have to go through, and I came out of that recognizing that I owe you a great deal of thanks and appreciation for what you all do. And I don't always agree with everything you vote on and do, but I do really respect all of you and want to thank you for what you do for this county. I read through 155 pages. I sure didn't study it all, and And Mr. Smithers and his band of merry men and women prepare all that stuff, and I thank him also. But you all do a service for this county. And I realize you get paid an exorbitant amount of money to do it. And so I just want to tell you that I appreciate you. And thank you very much, and wish you Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak? And no one on Zoom?
Zoom is clear, ma'am.
Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment period. All right, moving on to appointments, Boards and Commissions.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, we have two appointments tonight. First, the Powhatan Anti-Litter Council. Mrs. Mimi Zalati has submitted her willingness to be reappointed. So if the Board had a discussion on that.
I move we reappoint Ms. Mimi Zalati to the Powhatan Anti-Litter Council. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Our second reappointment tonight involves a Powhatan Board of Equalization and Review. Mr. Bob Blake has submitted his willingness to be reappointed.
I move we reappoint Mr. Bob Blake to the Powhatan County Board of Equalization. Any questions or comments on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to new business, we have Resolution R. 2021-57. I will take that and read that. Whereas Mr. William Bill Cox is the elected District Four Board of Supervisor for Powhatan County. And whereas during the November 22 Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cox engaged in verbal misconduct, unbecoming of a supervisor that has been detrimental to the credibility of the Board of Supervisors, which in turn has been pernicious to the morale of the Board, staff, and the citizens of Powhatan County. And whereas during the November 22, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cox blatantly lied to the public four times about his vote his colleagues never took. Whereas during the November 22, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cox slandered two colleagues on the Board of Supervisors by misrepresenting their actions. Whereas during the November 22, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cox publicly lied to the public about what the "record" showed regarding the actions of two colleagues. Whereas during the November 22, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting, Mr. Cox showed an overt lack of respect for his colleagues in a continued pattern of purposeful inflammatory behavior. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors, for the reasons indicated above, hereby formally censures Mr. Cox and removes him from all Board of Supervisors-appointed Commissions, Boards, and Committees. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, now, any questions or comments on the motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
With a resolution, it is always interesting to know the origin. Who prepared this resolution?
I did.
Who placed it on the agenda?
I did.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to start tonight talking about the community. After all, it's five days till Christmas. Could I have Slide 1, please? The Powhatan Christmas Mother's theme is a Christmas of unity. Mrs. Carmack's actions have shredded that theme. People walking down the aisle, some saying nice things about me, some saying things that aren't nice about me, are talking about our differences, not unity. The anger present on this stage could not wait until January. Had to take it out before Christmas. Could not pretend that there was unity. Had to shred the Christmas Mother's theme. So before the parade, before the Christmas tree lighting, we are planting, planning to shred the thing. This is an impact that the community feels that goes beyond the people sitting on this Board. So I guess I ask the rhetorical question is, this really the output and the joy for the parade, Christmas Mother? Was this really a slogan? Does Carmack really have unity in her heart? So I think that's a question that you all have to answer for yourself. It's rhetorical. Mr. Pong, Mr. Byerly, before the evening is over, there'll be a vote, and you're going to have to show the citizens of Powhatan if there's unity in your heart or your about divisiveness. Now, let's begin to talk about the allegations themselves. Basically, they say I'm a mean old guy who lies. Let's count the sum total of it. So I'd like to go back to the 9/27 meeting. We have a brief clip from the Village Park called Village Park and Christmas Tree. Holly, could you get that up, please? This is the 9/27 meeting.
Listening, Mr. Byerly, myself, we like the park. Do you three not like the park idea at all? Do you want to get rid of that? Is it the funding of the park? I mean, do you not want to commit any funds to it? And if I could find funds another way, you would want to proceed? Or you just, you don't like the idea at all?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
What I think we've heard is we can accomplish exactly what the Christmas Mother wanted and what you set out to do with a very simple design, which is a Christmas tree with benches around it, and we leave it at that. You've got three Board Members who are supporting that.
Okay, so I guess no to the rest. Okay.
Thank you. Somebody's counting votes, I believe. Now, I'd like to move to the 11/22 meeting. Before we do that, Holly, if we could have Slide number two. This is... Can we blow that up just a little bit? This is the agenda for that meeting. And under Old Business, we had a Christmas Tree Park. Now, could we go to Slide number three? Bring it down so we can see the circle, please. So here's actually the resolution that went with a Christmas Tree Park. It wasn't a Christmas Tree Park, it was the Village Park. We had separated these tree from the village previously, but this was made to look like we were going to be talking about a Christmas Tree Park, when in fact, we were talking about the Village Park. I asked to have that changed so that it would be clear what was going on. That was refused. So could we go to Clip Number... Slide number four? The reason I asked that, because we just approved the minute meetings tonight that says Old Business Christmas Tree Park, which is really the Village Park, and it looks as if I voted against the Christmas Tree Park. Now, we put up with this all the time. Where there's innuendo, where things are changing, you have to turn over every rock and look behind everything. Someone is constantly trying to make it look like something it's not. So I would now like, if we would, to... This is from the 11/22 meeting. There's a short clip, which is labeled "Style." Now, I'm also excited, and it's really interesting. Go back to what I originally said when I wanted to change the agenda. Mr. Williams, Mr. Berry, and I voted for the Christmas tree. We're the reason the Christmas tree is done. The reason we're going to have the lighting. Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly voted against. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Cox, that's an outright lie, and you know it.
No, ma'am. If you will read the record, you voted against it. We decoupled it, it's not a lie. I'm afraid you're upset.
Okay, all right.
I'm finished talking. So who's being disrespected? Who's being called a liar in public? What is my demeanor? Calm, sensible. And for that, I'm being told I'm a bad doobie. Now, I'd like to go, same meeting. And it's fascinating, because we're going to get another version of Ms. Stratton. Convenient how things have changed this evening. But if you'd play... This is from the second public comment period that night, while everything was nice and fresh in their mind. Would you play the Stratton Cap clip, please?
Stratton, 2940 Lake Louise Drive, and I would like to request to speak on behalf of Powhatan first, because I may use five minutes. I'd like to thank you for approving the park. A lot of people are very excited about that. I am on social media a lot, and we realize that it is a Christmas Tree lighting and a park. I am very disappointed in something I've heard tonight at least four times, because I was at that meeting. Y'all know that I am here at most meetings, and I pay very close attention. And Mrs. Carmack brought forth the Christmas Tree lighting and the park as one thing. And Mr. Berry split it down. So yes, the three, Mr. Williams, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Cox, approved the Christmas Tree lighting, and Mr. Byerly and Mrs. Carmack voted against it.
Fascinating. Pretty clear to her that night exactly what happened. So we've seen Mrs. Carmack counting votes. We've seen Mrs. Carmack attacking me. And we've seen the citizen saying, look, clearly, there was a vote, and it was three to two, and they were named. And that is something we're going to censure someone for. Wow. Good for Powhatan. You've seen Mr. Berry, who was a participant describing it, a vote. You have Mr. Williams says, there's a vote. You have me saying there's a vote. You have Ms. Stratton saying there's a vote. So what's really going on? This isn't about this. This is piddly stuff. This is really about trying to shut me down. They don't like me. And we'll kind of talk about why. But isn't it interesting with the timing? Why now? Why purposely shred the Christmas Mother's message? Look to divide the community. Why would you do that? Well, I don't know why she did that. I could give you a possible rationale. See, January is organizational month, and we have to pick a new chairman. Mrs. Carmack has made it very clear she likes being chairman, and there's no indication that she wants to do anything other than keep her hands wrapped around the controls. So we've had Mr. Williams. We've had Mr. Carmack. Mrs. Carmack, I'm sorry, ma'am. Mrs. Carmack, that's Chair. And I have some interest in being Chair, and that's not a surprise to Mrs. Carmack. So can we slander me? Can we help take out any potential opponent, if you will? Now, I don't know whether I could get three votes from this Board or not. But there's a reason why we had to move forward tonight, five days before Christmas. Now, there's a bigger effort going on. We've got a change on the Board. Part of it is why you're seeing the kinds of things we're talking about tonight. There's been an effort to reduce and filter information. Could I have Slide number five, please? Sorry, I'm looking... Can't read that. I'm looking for the document, and I have it here.
I'll be happy to read the email.
No, you're not going to read my email. Thank you. Because it's from Mrs. Carmack. Could we blow up the bottom, please? This is from Mrs. Carmack to all the Board Members. I would like to propose that we cancel the joint meeting with the School Board on December 14. Candidly, I've not found the meetings to be productive and more of a waste of time for both Boards. I cannot unilaterally do this, this is already on the county calendar. If you're okay with this, could you please send me an email letting me know? Didn't talk with the School Board at all. Bring it down, please, a little bit, so I can read my response. Mrs. Carmack, I've been away from the computer since last Wednesday, so I'm getting to this, I'm just getting to this. First, I'm astonished that you feel like they're a waste of time. I felt the June meeting on CRT was a game changer for both Boards. The June meeting is when Mr. Williams brought forth the whole issue of CRT and how it was seeping into our schools and has caused changes in our School Board and changes. And has caused changes in our school board and changes in our school. Speaking to, speaking to each other, the two boards directly removes the filters of administrative staff. And I find that useful because we've already had instances where our administrative staff were misrepresenting what was going on. It's part of our strategic plan, one a quarter. But no, it's kind of getting in the way of things. I would like to discuss the upcoming budget landmark. Uh, there was, and there was a flyer that went with it. Uh, excuse me, a flyer that David showed us, okay? And finally, on a conceptual basis, you have a customer, the schools, that consume over 50% of your revenue and you have nothing to talk with them about? I'm sorry, I do not understand that position regarding bill. That's not exactly bombastic. But it's what we're dealing with, which is a opportunity to cut down on information. To slow it down, to make it harder to see what's going on. And it's not good for the citizens of this county. There's another effort going on where projects are being packaged, put together without public input, without our processes for a vote. Most recent example was the village park. Not the Christmas tree, Christmas tree was, everybody loved that. That was Mrs. Carmack's idea and she did a great job with it. The park, on the other hand, we broke all of our processes. That is a CIP process by definition. Twenty over 25,000, 15 years of use. This was at least 50,000 and it lasts forever. But our county administrator, working with Mrs. Carmack, shut out our professional staff, shut out our advisory committee and didn't take it through the CIP process. So the questions that were not asked are pretty straightforward. We have over $11 million already budgeted or set up, excuse me, planned in our parks and rec. So how would this project fare against them? Our parks and rec plan has been built on building out our existing facilities, adding to them. Does this make sense to break away money and send it someplace else? These are questions that need to have answers. If we're going to break away from where we're expanding our existing parks, where should it go? Should it go to the east end of the county? Should they have a park? Should we have taken the money, the, excuse me, the land we just bought? Where the convenience center is on the north side? And should we have a park there? These are questions that were never asked because the process was aborted. Not used. Plan delivered without public input. We just had a meeting tonight with the library board. The library board had been teed up to change how it's being run. Mr. Smithor apologized to them tonight, but they were blindsided. Unfortunately, that was changed. We have coming attractions that are already started. There's a plan going forth to build a convenience center, excuse me, not a convenience center, of, of, a senior center of some type. It's already started. But the discussion is not starting with the board. Not the whole board, it's starting with the piece of the board and Mr. Smithor. One more time, a package project being set up and delivered. But most of all, is they hate me. They want me silenced. They don't want the transparency that I demand. They don't like daylight. They like dark corners. So while they hate me, they're mortified by you, the public. You ask embarrassing questions. You ask hard questions. And I hope you will continue to. But that's what I bring. That's what I am. It's daylight. It's transparency. So you have people who've told you that what's in this resolution is false. Doesn't hold water. And we're going to get to see what my colleagues want to do. But the reality is it's not going to change what I do. I'll just get a bigger flashlight. It'll look harder. But you'll get the transparency you deserve because I'm working for it. Madam Chair, for the moment, I'm finished.
Thank you, sir. Speaking of transparency, I have a video I would like to show, if you could pull that up and to give you a little idea. It gives a chronology of the events that occurred and precipitated this resolution. Um, it's a little, little more expanded than Mr. Cox's transparent video. So if you could pull that up, I would appreciate it.
Second, Mr. Cox publicly asserted four times that he, Mr. Berry and Mr. Williams voted for the community Christmas tree, while Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly voted against it.
On 9/27, we approved the Christmas tree. Uh, that was a vote of Mr. Williams, Mr. Berry and Mr. Cox in the affirmative. And Mr. Byerly and Mrs. Carmack opposed the Christmas tree. So we have the Christmas tree already in there. On our last meeting, 1110, there were two items placed together, the Christmas tree and parking lot. Mrs. Carmack, you properly asked to have those separated. And so I think it's important tonight that the public understands that the resolution that we are looking at is for a village park. And that the Christmas tree has already been approved by supervisors Cox, Williams and Berry and voted against by supervisors Carmack and Byerly. So I would like to make those two changes. Thank you. This is a discussion about a village park, uh, which is separate from the Christmas tree. The Christmas tree was approved almost six weeks ago by Mr. Berry, Mr. Williams and myself and was opposed by Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly. So now, um, I'm also excited and it's really interesting. Go back to what I originally said when I wanted to change the agenda. Mr. Williams, Mr. Berry and I voted for the Christmas tree. We're the reason the Christmas tree is done. The reason we're going to have the lighting. Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly voted against. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Cox, that's an outright lie and you know it.
No ma'am, if you will read the record, you voted against it. We decoupled it, it's not a lie. I'm afraid you're upset.
Okay, alright.
I'm finished talking.
Okay, yes, sir.
So what does the record show? We'll get there, but first a little history. On July 20th, Ms. Carmack sent an email to the board of supervisors bringing up the idea of a community Christmas tree in a small park. On September 27th, it was placed on the agenda and the following discussion transpired.
Jump right on in there. I'm very supportive of having the Christmas tree and having a small park with it. It was a little bit more, when we got the drawing, it was a little bit more than I had envisioned. But that was my vision versus each, everyone has their own envision on what it may have looked like. I kind of envisioned that front piece, not the, the complete park. From my perspective, that was kind of relatively quick. It meets our objectives of getting a, a Christmas tree for a community gathering place. Versus the more grandiose design that serves a great educational purpose. But I think it was more than I at least wrapped my head around or envisioned originally. That, that is what I envisioned. It could be totally different than what you envisioned.
Uh, I don't have any problem with a Christmas tree and a couple of benches. Uh, I think that would work. That gives us a place to light, um, a tree. That gives us a focal point. I would support that, Mr. Berry.
I could support that as well, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea and I'd like to thank you for bringing the idea forward. I think it's a great idea. I think the, the only thing we need to work out or even discuss is the location. Uh, what I would like to do is to have a workshop. I think this is a good location. But that said, I would like to talk to the stakeholders in the village.
Tree is a great idea and if a tree is all this board wants to do, that's fine, okay? I'd be happy to take a tree. But I think we have an opportunity, especially if we can get some grant money, some other local businesses in the county to, uh, step up and pay some.
So to kind of bring this ahead for the board. I get, obviously, Mr. Byerly, myself, we like the park. Do you three not like the park idea at all? Do you want to get rid of that? Is it the funding of the park? I mean, do you not want to commit any funds to it? And if I could find funds another way, you would want to proceed or you just, you, you don't like the idea at all?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what I think we've heard is we can accomplish uh, exactly what the Christmas mother wanted and what you set out to do with a very simple design, which is a Christmas tree with benches around it. And we leave it at that. You've got three board members who are supporting that.
Okay, so I guess no to the rest. Okay. It's not going to be anything.
Some sidewalk or pavement or.
I mean, do you want sidewalk, do you want pavement? If you don't want any of that, it's going to be, you know, um.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Cox.
Mr. Williams suggested that we have a workshop and we can work that out.
Okay, so we won't worry about an appropriation. Okay, next.
As you can see, no vote was ever taken. On October 25th, the following minutes were approved five to zero. Fast forward to the November 10th Board of Supervisors workshop and the final discussion about the community tree occurred.
I'm not going to wade in on where this Christmas tree is going to be going in the village, so I'm going to defer to you. You have my vote.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to echo Mr. Williams, although I still do put up a Christmas tree. But, but I am going to say, um, while we're talking about where we're going to put a Christmas tree is beyond me.
A short week and a half later, Mr. Cox made his assertions. On November 23rd, Ms. Carmack sent the following email to Mr. Cox questioning his statements. Similarly, on November 25th, Mr. Byerly sent an email asking for clarification as well. Both Mrs. Carmack and Mr. Byerly are still waiting for a response.
So when you see a little more of the video, you get a little better idea. And I would encourage each and every one of you to go back and watch the sections of those meet, meetings completely. So you get a true indication of what really happened. And what this resolution is about tonight, it's not about the park. It's not about a Christmas tree. It's not about personal feelings. It's about a fellow colleague slandering and lying about a vote that never took place. That's what this censorship is about. We, yes, we are supposed to act like a team, Mr. Cox. You're right. And candidly, waiting till January, waiting till February, that's completely irrelevant. If you are worried about unity, why would you do what you did? Why would you say four times blatantly, Mr. Byerly and Mrs. Carmack voted against the Christmas tree? When a vote never happened? Why am I going to vote against an idea that I brought up?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I did say four times that the vote took place. And I would have said it five times as I had an opportunity. Why? When we go back to where this started, which was the agenda, where they manipulated the agenda to make it look like I had to vote against the Christmas tree park. It was important to me since they wouldn't change the record, the written record, allowed it to continue to show something that it's not, to make it clear what really happened. In fact, there was a vote. So as you sit there and you listen to all of this, you got to be wondering, what is the value? This is a bunch of bickering over nothing. You're seeing disagreement and discussion which goes on all the time. The different component is the anger that Mrs. Carmack seems to be carrying. That's what's taking it over the top. There's no slander here. There's no continued pattern of purposeful inflammatory behavior. I believe the Palatine paper described, uh, Mrs. McFarland used the term informal vote. We do all kinds of votes. We do head nods. But the vote took place. It was reported in the paper it took place. The paper, paper hasn't reported that I've done anything outlandish, out, out of order. There have been no calls for, uh, order against me at all. And so what's, what's fascinating about this is in reality, what you have is one person decides that they want to make up something and charge you with it, which she did on Wednesday. The agenda was released and said, wow, we're going to have a censorship for Mr. Cox. The document she read, she sat on until Sunday. So not only is this about agitation, it's also about tactics. This is about war. This is about attack. That's what you say. That's the kind of leadership we have on the board this evening. But to some total of what's been said tonight in terms of what, of consequence, zero. By me or by Mrs. Carmack? It doesn't mean anything. It doesn't help anything. And no matter what was said, it doesn't change anything. So if we want to weaponize the board, Mrs. Carmack has found a way to do that. Let's go into attack mode. Let's run a Fox News talking head attack program. All the time, what's important for the citizens is being left behind. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wish to speak?
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I may. Pretty, pretty interesting thirty-five, forty minutes of conversation there and videos. Trust me, I'll try to be a little quicker, move through. But I make no promise. I think maybe there's even some misunderstanding as to censure and censor. But I'm not going to be the attorney or the expert or the one to pontificate on what it is. But I will tell you my perspective. This censure is about proper conduct. The integrity of us all up here. We represent you. You elected us. We are entrusted by you. If we violate that trust, there can be consequences. And frankly, there should be. I'm not talking about a little white lie. I'm not talking about an off-the-cuff comment. I'm not talking about a Freudian slip of the tongue. I'm not talking about a conversation that happens and somebody misspeaks. On November the 22nd, in this meeting, Mr. Cox misrepresented to you, the public, that there had been a vote. Three for a tree. Three supervisors voted for a Christmas tree. Mr. Williams, Mr. Berry, and Mr. Cox. And they are the reason you have a tree. Supervisor Carmack, Supervisor Byerly opposed the tree. That's what was said. Not one time, not two times, not three times, but four times. And as was said tonight, it could have been five if that would have been allowed, probably could have been. That's a total fabrication, deliberately misleading you, the public. There never was a vote on a Christmas tree. You have a vote, there's a motion. There's nod votes, there's not, there's confirmation, yes, you know, no, but there's always a motion. There's no motion. No motion was ever made. A completely false statement that Ms. Carmack and myself opposed the tree on September the 27th meeting. The video clearly states, I seen it tonight, on the 9/27 meeting, at forty-nine minutes and thirty seconds, Mike Byerly says, if this board just wants a tree, I am fine with a tree. It was on the video tonight. I'm fine with a tree. Then I said that I thought this tree and the park would create unity, which is what the Christmas Mother's theme is. And I believe that. I don't, I, I don't, I, I come up here and I watch things that go on and people say and people agree and people disagree and the people would be us, the board members, which is a good thing if you do it respectfully. And there was a person that spoke tonight, talked about respect. I have the respect. But when you slander someone, which is what in my mind happened to me and Ms. Carmack. And that's a strong word. That's a very strong word. Just to give you the definition of it, slander, to make a false statement, or excuse me, to make a false spoken statement that causes people to have a bad opinion of someone else. That's out of Merriam Dictionary, Webster's Dictionary. Ms. Carmack, it was said by Mr. Williams that that tree was a great idea. It was said here tonight by Mr. Cox, that tree was a great idea. If it was such a great idea, why would the person who brought it forward oppose it and vote against it? There was another thing that I call number five in the November 22nd meeting, where there was an exchange between Ms. Carmack and Mr. Cox. And in that exchange, Mr. Cox told Ms. Carmack to read the record. The record would be the minutes of the 9/27 meeting. I went back and looked at those and read those. Nowhere do I see there was a vote taken. Nowhere do, did I see there was a motion made. Nowhere did I see there was a second made. On October the 25th, if you come to a lot of these meetings and you pay close attention, I'll be the first one to tell Mr. Cox, he does a very good job at being thorough with his research and his details. And he does. On October the 25th, the agenda, page eight, is where this was discussed in the consent agenda. And if you've watched these meetings, Mr. Cox is, he'll pull them off and set them to the side and say, they, 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 they said the wrong word or there wasn't a comma there or something, uh, which is very detailed and, and I certainly can appreciate that. But on that agenda from October 25th, page eight, that's the minutes for the meeting of November the twen- or excuse me, September the 27th, that we keep talking about, the September 27th meeting. So when you disagree with someone, and that happens up here, and that's fine. I don't think there's a problem with disagreeing. Have some common courtesy, have some professionalism, have some respect, uh, kindness and courteous. I, I, I follow in that. I think that's probably right. Are there conversations that people are very passionate about? Sure. But when you disagree with someone or a subject or a proposal, that does not give you the right to misrepresent facts or lie. All in an effort to sway people's opinion or a decision. Instead of giving a mendacious story, just stick with the facts. I'm about the truth. Let's tell the truth. There was no motion. There was no vote regarding a Christmas tree, pavers, benches, or a pocket park by Mr. Berry or anyone else at the November twenty sev- or Sep- September 27th meeting. I heard the word tonight for the first time. Well, it wasn't the first time. I heard it that night. Support. I heard two people say the word support. I, I'm not sure that's a vote. I, um, you know, i- it's, I'm gonna leave it at that. And I'm just going to tell you that I had many people contact me over the past three days about this resolution and discussed it. But there was one common question that pretty much, not everybody, but most everybody brought up. How do we know when we're being told the truth? It's a good question. I hope from this point going forward, you'll know that you can trust what's being said up here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Before we finish, I would like to just make one last quick point on this. Go back to what I said earlier. I don't take censoring a colleague lightly at all. And I've thought about this long and hard for a month. This was not a decision that I came to easily, personally speaking. And again, the people need to understand this isn't about the park. It's not about the Christmas tree. It's not about personal feelings or disagreements. It's about facts. And it's how we conduct business in this county. And the integrity of the interaction that we have with each other on this stage is critical. I mean, we're conducting the people's business. And the citizens of Powhatan deserve to have confidence that they have a team of five elected members that can functionally, effectively, and honestly work to get the business of this county done. And making deliberate slanderous comments about fellow board members, it's neither productive nor does it help build healthy, functional, working relationships. We can do better. Your roll call?
Madam Chair. I've spent four years on the Planning Commission. It's eight years on the Board of Supervisors. So I've had plenty of experiences on boards. This is one of the low points and I can only recall anything equal to what I'm feeling tonight because I'm depressed. I've been depressed ever since I found out about the resolution Ned told me on Thursday. The other occasion where I felt this low was at the January 2016 organizational meeting of the Board of Supervisors. At that meeting going in, I was chairman of the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission. I had s- I was serving on the Richmond Regional Transportation Planning Organization where I'd been chairman and where I had changed that organization when I was chairman. Where we actually had the elected officials replace staff sitting at the table voting down there. We changed the name. We actually got an award from the Federal Highway Administration. But little did I know going into that meeting what was going to happen. And this was at the beginning of the four-year term with a new board. I was taken off the Richmond Regional Planning District Commission, even though I was chairman, even though I had six months to continue, even though we had just hired in record time a new executive director and I'd laid a plan as to how I was going to work with her over the next six months. Didn't make any difference. And I remember how I felt that night. I was embarrassed. And I'm feeling the same way tonight. I wasn't embarrassed for me. I was embarrassed for the board. I was embarrassed for the county because I knew it was a huge mistake. Because the issue wasn't about me and what I would have been able to accomplish and working for the county. It was about individuals. And when it becomes about you instead of the county, it never works. That's when the wheels come off the wagon. I can't tell you how much I regret this conversation up here tonight because it doesn't amount to anything. Y'all can watch the videos. Positions get nuanced and debates all the time. You can decide for yourself. And at the end of the day, we move forward. I was excited, you know, with the Christmas tree lighting. I was, I've said this again. I was excited about the idea. I just didn't like the pollinator park. But I'm not going to go through all that again because we've been here, I don't know, forty-five minutes, an hour? And we've got all these other things on the agenda that we should be discussing. But I will say one last thing. I wouldn't do the action tonight, whatever side you agree with. Censoring somebody, go ahead and Google how many supervisors have been censored in Virginia. Just do a simple Google search. I could only bring up two and both of them involve criminal activity. My colleagues in the other jurisdictions around the region, they've already gotten word of this and they're saying, what? Because this doesn't happen. All I'm saying to you tonight, this does nothing to make the county look good. It doesn't do anything to help the board. Again, I'm depressed and I'm embarrassed tonight. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Smither?
Mr. Williams. Well, what, please explain what, what a vote ma- was means, please, sir. In terms of, so everybody's clear about how they're voting. That's, it's been a while since the resolution took.
So, and I would be in favor of the resolution.
Okay, and I isn't, thank you. Mr. Williams. Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Nay.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye.
Moving forward, presentation?
Tonight, I'd like to, we have, uh, as we do every year, we welcome our external auditors from Brown Edwards and Company to present the audit results from fiscal year June 30, 2021. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Chris Banta, partner, to present his results. Mr. Welcome, Mr. Banta.
Hey, thank you for having me tonight. Um, it's good to see everyone up for the holidays and it's, uh, especially good to go over the audit results. Want to thank, uh, and just reintroduce myself. I'm Chris Banta. I am, uh, one of the concurring partners in our government practice group. I have some, uh, I have, uh, I'm involved in your audit from various different, uh, aspects. I'm not the primary partner on your audit, but I do live in Milosek, so I'm a lot easier to get here. So, but want to thank Charlotte and her team for getting us to this point. It's a long process. It starts in the early spring uh, and goes on for a solid nine months, culminating tonight with the presentation of the audit. Uh, do want to mention that, uh, your financials are pretty complex. They continue to get longer and more complex each year. But your financials are prepared by Charlotte and her team, so commend them on that. Not all of our clients prepare those documents themselves. My goal tonight is to go over the results of the audit at a very high level. I'm not going to go page by page through the financials, but I'm going to go through the results. What I'm going to do is go over those, um, the three different phases of the audit. If you have any questions tonight, uh, feel free to ask those. If you have any questions after tonight, please feel free to reach out. Uh, this is what we do and we're happy to talk about this at any point, uh, during the year. As I mentioned, the audit segregated into three different phases. Uh, the first phase, of course, is the primary reason that you engage us as auditors and that's to give you an opinion on your, the fairness and the accuracy of your financial statements, uh, which is about the first twenty pages of your financial report and the additional hundred and fifty pages or so of, uh, footnotes. Our focus is to provide you an opinion on the accuracy of those, of those statements. And I'm happy to report that the county, the schools, and the Economic Development Authority received a clean or unmodified opinion on those financial statements once again. So, once again, commend Charlotte and her team. Um, you know, one thing I do, I will briefly mention, there's one moderately significant change this year. If you look at the school statements, uh, you will see a, probably a higher level of cash there than usual. That's because the school activity funds, which were previously reported in a separate document, are now part of these, of these statements. Um, they've always been there. It's always been about that amount of cash. But a new accounting rule this year required that those, uh, activity funds be presented in this document, whereas they were separate before. From an audit perspective, still the same level of scrutiny. From an audit perspective, still the same level of scrutiny for all the schools, just a different presentation matter, just in case you were looking at that. The second phase of the audit, because you're a government entity, we have to present, perform our audit in accordance with government auditing standards. While doing these audits, in accordance with those standards, we have to look at your internal controls, your processes, your procedures, how you pay your vendors and your employees, how you bill your citizens. Just look at those. Look at your processes. Make sure they're designed appropriately to prevent fraud. And also just to look while we're doing our testing to see if we did detect any errors or omissions or things of that nature that could cause what we call a significant deficiency or material weakness in your internal controls. And I would have to report those to you today if I had any of those. I'm happy to report no such matters. Also, as part of that phase of the audit, you, the Audit of Public Accounts provides us with a pretty lengthy compliance supplement with a number of procedures we have to perform each year. While doing that, if I had any findings from that testing, I have to report those to you today, and I'm happy to report no findings in accordance with that. Third phase of our audit is the federal single audit because you receive a significant amount of federal funding. Of course, this year, some of the highest level of funding all of our local governments received was the CARES funding. We have to test certain large federal programs on a cyclical basis, once every three years. This year, we tested the Child Nutrition Program at the schools, and we also tested the Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is the CARES Act funding. Happy to report that we tested the controls over those programs, and we tested a significant number of transactions, and we're happy to report two clean opinions on, a clean opinion on each of those programs. One thing I had been mentioning at all these meetings, the CARES Act funding will continue to get a higher level of scrutiny, just because there is a significant amount of that funding that has gone to local governments. The, what we expect is the ARPA funding that also went to local governments to also receive a high level of scrutiny, where we're probably gonna have to test that every year for the foreseeable future, as long as the federal government requires us to. So. Those are the results of the, of the audit. I also would like to mention that as a partner in my firm, I'm required to report to you if there are any hurdles or anything that we had to accomplish to get to that clean opinion, because sometimes what we start with isn't what we, what we end with. And things that I would have to report to you would be significant adjustments to the financials, disagreements with management, or situations where management required a second opinion from another CPA firm, or just any difficulties we had while performing or our engagement as auditors. And I'm happy to report no such matters there. And that, that's pretty uncommon to have. Most of our clients, there's some hurdle we have to get over to get that clean opinion. So, want to commend your team once again on the results on a successful audit this year.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to thank Mr. Banta for your time tonight, and Charlotte and your staff. I think you've got your three deep total. And this financial report and the results here are fantastic tribute to what you've done for us, including the CARES Act documentation. I mean, that's something we don't, we'll never see again. But you know, the fact that you were able to keep trying to get a clean opinion on that tells us a lot about what you're doing in our finance department. So thank you for your efforts.
Moving on to item C.
Good evening, Madam Chair, and members of the board. The next item involves a contract award for a new fire engine, number seven oh four. At the time of the agenda, our bid pricing was not available. We received two bids later today on the fire engine. Both bids are very close to the winning bid, which was to a company called Sudfin, I think I pronounced that correctly, at a price of six hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. Our CIP for five, for fire apparatus for fiscal year twenty-two tolls nine hundred thousand dollars, which included an estimate for engine seven oh four of six hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the bid came in very close to the slightly above three thousand dollars above that number. Chief Warner has assured me that the slight overs can be absorbed within our existing CIP budget. Chief Warner, I hear I'm glad to answer any questions you may have, or if not, I'll entertain a motion that authorizes the contract execution by the county administrator with prior legal review by the county attorney. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Could you help me with the numbers again? I mean, we, you ran through about three or four numbers. So, we have over nine hundred thousand for apparatus in our CIP. Fiscal year twenty-two. Okay. What did we have set up for this specific? Six hundred and twenty-five thousand. That's what we had in the CIP? Right, for this piece. And we're going to spend? This particular bid is six twenty-eight, five thirty-five. Okay, yes. Great, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, so you need a motion?
I have a question, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are we, is this a new, brand-new vehicle, chief? Take your time.
Yes, sir. Brand-new vehicle.
So what's the warranty on one of these?
The first year is bumper-to-bumper is a hundred percent warranty, and then it's, it depends on body. The body's a ten-year, or body's a ten-year frame rails, lifetime, electrical, two to four years, depending on components, engines, five years, transmissions, five years.
The thirty-three hundred dollars were over what we projected with our capital improvement projects. If I heard Mr. Smithers right, you're gonna be able to handle that within your budget that you have currently, correct?
Yes, sir.
This is replacing an engine, right?
Yes, sir.
What are we doing with that engine?
That one is gonna move into reserve status, and the current reserve, which is nineteen ninety models, if I'm not mistaken, is gonna probably move on to greener pasture somewhere else, because it's thirty-one years old.
Greener pastures might need a monument. Here's a question. Does it have value to it? That, are we gonna put it on a bid out or something?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Typically, we have, and the, for, using for an example, so you can use it as a kind of a rule of thumb, we had two that we replaced in twenty nineteen. It's at Macon in the Deep Creek, and we got approximately five thousand dollars apiece for it.
Okay. This particular unit that we're replacing, does it have a very good track record historically?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions? So we just make a motion to approve the formal award to purchase fire engine seven oh four? Okay, any questions or comments on the motion? Do we, do we need a roll call for this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And next item, Madam Chair, is, and your board pack includes amendment from Brett Shardine discussing access points for gas stations within the county. Mr. Shardine is here tonight to answer any questions in advance of a request to forward this topic to our Planning Commission for review at their February meeting. Mr. Shardine?
Good evening, board. So, somebody recently looking to redevelop one of our existing gas stations, and when we get a proposal like that, we look at our ordinances and see what some potential issues might be, what works, what doesn't. And that caused us to find what we think is a potential issue with our ordinance. We specifically limit gas stations to no more than two vehicular access points. That's unique. We don't call out any other uses specifically, but it's not so much the calling out of gas stations specifically, but it's the use of that word vehicular access points. We take that to mean essentially just that, any access point that a vehicle can use. So that would be both entrances onto a public or private road or cross-access points between parcels. And that's, that's where we see the real issue. Wasn't around when this was introduced. Believe it came in two thousand fourteen. There was a comprehensive rewrite of our ordinances that the county used a consultant to do. And we've, we've corrected many issues with that update over the years that we found. I imagine the intent was probably to restrict them to no more than two entrances, so direct access points on the public roads, not to restrict internal access. That seems against good planning practice and what we in VDOT typically encourage, but it is the wording that we have in there today. Checked with some other localities in the region to see how others handle this. Nobody that I spoke to addressed gas stations in such a way. And again, felt like it would be best planning practice for the county and VDOT to work together to find the best access points and to allow internal cross-access between neighboring parcels. We don't want people to have to, you know, if you're going into a restaurant, leave that, go under Route sixty to get back into a gas station that's right next to it. You should pull to the entrance and then go between those uses. But again, currently is where the ordinance would restrict that. So we think it's worth looking at and sending the Planning Commission so they can, you know, we can get the public's input. They can consider it and send the recommendation back on to you. So again, welcome any feedback you might have. Again, tonight, you're not supporting, you know, or against this. It's just if you think there's enough to look at, let's send the Planning Commission. We'll work on it and bring something back to you.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Shardine?
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
Brett, I'd ask you to look at what the other locales that we're doing, you know, specifically Henruck, because they think business first, residential second. And they've got a repeat planning staff. They've got traffic injuries. And what you came back with was they defer to VDOT for the access going in and cross-access as well going into these gas stations. They don't have an arbitrary set limit for vehicle, vehicle access.
Correct, yeah. And, and we still, it's worth noting, too, we have more stringent access management, turn lane requirements than VDOT standards, so those would still apply. This is more about, you know, can you have more than two cross-access entrance points?
I recommend we send it on to the Planning Commission. As long, make sure they get that information that you researched, and I know you will.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, is that a motion?
It is a motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Madam Chair, members of the board, after many discussions about, about updates to our comprehensive plan, we're anxious to make zoning changes that would allow the edits that would follow the edits made to comprehensive plan. Mr. Shardine's here tonight to discuss a checklist of modifications that staff prepared to this end. Mr. Shardine?
So, you know, as you're well aware, the, the comprehensive plan is our long-term goal and vision for the county, and then the subdivision and zoning ordinances are how we, we, you know, daily and how staff implement that vision as development happens. So it's typical that when you do an update to your comprehensive plan, you would follow up and, and look at your ordinances and see what might need to be changed to better align the two. So we've gone through and taken a look at some of the changes to the comp plan and our zoning and subdivision ordinance to point out some areas that we would see may need amendment to better align the two. So before we initiate that, and we just want to get your input, see are there, there additional things you see here, any other thoughts we should consider, anything you think doesn't need changing? Just so we can have a better plan going forward for, you know, what we're taking on and what the scale of such an update is. So, a few, few points in the memo here, you know, any, any that you would like to see us work on, anything additional that you think needs to be added to that, then we can begin working with Planning Commission and staff.
You're pretty confident that we can do this in-house, correct?
Yeah, I think so. You know, bringing in outside resources, that, that can be good when it's a very specific technical change. In this case, the changes we're talking about are so interwoven throughout the ordinance. It lends itself much better to internal staff. You know, we know the ordinances. You would spend as much time managing a consultant on something like this as you would probably get out of them. So I think we handle it internally would be my recommendation.
How long do you think it would take?
So that would be part of tonight is figuring out what's the scale of it. You know, is there anything here you all want to see as well that needs to be changed? So, you know, as you know, we're a little short-staffed in the planning department right now. We've had some promising interviews. Hope to, hopefully have some more staff in soon. You know, if that's the case, then you know, I think a few months, obviously, any change has to go through public hearings and Planning Commission and all that. So even the simplest would be a few months, but hopefully not a great undertaking.
Okay, any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Shardine, I'd, I'd ask you to kind of think about, I've read how you've got this organized, to think about it in a kind of a different direction, okay? First, let's talk about all of the area outside of our growth districts, which is residential, okay? So our conservation subdivision is going, is the only option that's available out there. So we can immediately move our, our, our two. All of those can be moved to transition districts immediately. Don't need them. They're not supported by the comprehensive plan. And so then you have to get conservation subdivisions, so it's beginning to work. The one that exists out there, Mr. Carlisle's having a hell of a time, okay, with VDOT. That's, so it's not working.
Yeah.
So, okay, the next thing is the Gateway Center, excuse me, Gateways, yeah, Gateway Center Business Designation, which is all up and down sixty, okay? This will be supported by Commerce Center, okay? But we have to take some light residential uses and put it into Commerce Center.
Like industrial use?
Light industrial uses in the Commerce Center. We don't have to change the format of it. We just have to take a look at what's in light industrial and figure out what we want to move over. So that's a, actually a fairly easy change you get done in a hurry. The whole village district components, and the three of them, were built on having little villages, centers, and rolling out and rolling out, so that you had these villages up and down. They don't work. I would, from my perspective, they would become immediately transition districts. What you've got to build that you don't have is in the village area for residential, and what we gave you and what we adopted was a variation of RU. So that already has a description and a use that you can modify. Okay, so that, that doesn't, that takes some work, but not a lot of work. The other thing I would suggest when you're looking at the village, because we had commercial in it, is that any commercial uses would be by CUP, because it's really a question of where they're located and the kind of businesses there. So you've got to build something for the village RU, okay, that makes some sense. The, the biggie is economic opportunity. I don't, as I look at it, I see nothing on economic opportunity that exists today that really works, okay? And you've got economic opportunities in two different areas, and they have two different standards. And so I would suggest that you would be looking at building two different ordinances, one to service seven eleven, one to service sixty, okay, because they have different, different requirements, different densities. We made economic opportunity work for both areas and broke them out. I don't think you can properly make the ordinances, one ordinance work for both of them, and it would be confusing. Crossroads, not a problem. Light industrial, not a problem. I two, not a problem. There's no reason to even think about those. And so if we could get to work on, for my management, if we get to work on trying to understand better what we need with conservation subdivision, that takes care of the, all of the stuff outside the growth districts, fix the Commerce Center quickly. Fix the village designation built on RU quickly. Those are the things that are most likely to have the most pressing and needs coming forward. They, not, not to mention, I'm not mentioning, not suggesting that we shouldn't look at the economic opportunity, but those are gonna be a little bit more involved, okay? And from my standpoint, would not be the first things I would fix. I would fix those others because we can get them out, we can get them working, okay? Particularly the Commerce Center one, okay? That's an easy fix. We've got a list of uses. We've got to all agree on which uses we want and be done, and it's done with it, and it keeps the pattern book play, pattern book for industrial, light industrial uses all up and down sixty. So that really worked well. So we begin to look at it kind of that way. I think we can, we can rather quickly move a lot of stuff forward even, even with, with our short staff. Now, there gonna be some, there gonna be some other nuances that are gonna come up. The environmental piece is, is an interesting one, okay? And we'll have some other stuff like that, but we can, we can take a hunk out of this, okay? But it's gonna be a whole lot easier if someone will finally get a comprehensive plan actually published. We don't have one, and we need that if we're gonna look at this. The comprehensive plan is still on, on the county website, is two thousand and nineteen. Okay, and as you'll see tonight, there's confusion over what's in it. And the document that we had to use to approve the comp plan gives me some concerns that we have that right as we speak. So, anyway, I, you know, I, you know, I think, I know that you do. I know you understand these things, okay? Seems like we need to give you a paralegal and somebody that can write down everything you say so that we actually have something for, for people to look at. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Two questions, Madam Chair. Brett, how long you think it took you to do this?
So, I mean, I think that scale is very, very doable, you know, with short staff or not. So I would think a few months. Procedurally, would, you know, you all have given us some input here, and you may have more input. Do you want us to, to immediately start working on this and going to Planning Commission? Do you all want us to work on it, and you see something first to make sure we're going in the right direction before we go to Planning Commission? Kind of what do y'all see as the next step?
Personally, I would keep it kind of at the planning commission, you know, where the proper
process.
Yeah, that's the word I was looking for, but I, I have this, okay?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I would like for us to take a look at the framework of it first. Okay, not, not unlike what we've done with changing general commercial to commerce center, not unlike what we did with a, a minute ago, talking about gas stations. But to give them some direction about what we, we think makes sense. We don't have to go through all of the light industrial uses to get there, okay? They can do that. I have no problem with that. But I'd like to see us with the framework of what we want them to accomplish and the priority. That's something I think that we can help them with.
Any other thoughts on that, or what do you guys think?
Well, I'm just thinking of a little over a year ago when we talked about the comprehensive plan and doing a little tweaking and it took us a year. That's what I'm thinking about. I, I think Mr. Williams' question is kind of the same question that came out that particular night when Mr. Pompey was here answering the question. This can get pretty detailed. And we're short on staff. I do think between you, Brett, and Mr. Hopkins, you guys can push this thing along at a pretty fair thee well pace. The more you get involved with it, then the slower it takes. But from what I've seen that's in the packet in Mr. Cox's additions that he has interest in, I would just assume that you guys put it together. I mean, you're here and you, you, this is a gentleman that's been on the planning commission for eight years. There's a gentleman that's been on the board of supervisors for eight years, two, plus two now. You should have an idea what their expectations are and where they want to go, I guess, to some degree. But, you know, if we can have a little bit of a push to the planning commission, I think that puts it in the hands of, we all appointed planning commissioners, puts it in the hands of them and they can, they can bring it out and they talk to supervisors, I know that.
Madam Chair, let me back up. Ma'am?
Yes.
Brett, we don't have the comprehensive plan yet. I should have asked you this question first. When are we gonna have the comprehensive plan?
I'll have to get with staff, you know, we're working on trying to get it up as soon as we can. I know with GIS, trying to get the maps finally updated and all of that, it's been, you know, a bit of a slow process, but we're, we're working on it.
My second comment is gonna be, if you're gonna give this to the planning commission, the planning commission is gonna need guidance. You know, I ask you about who do we have that's qualified? You know, when you get into the subdivision ordinance and the zoning ordinance, that's where everything gets, the rubber meets the road. That's where, you know, your comprehensive plan actually gets enacted. So it gets pretty technical. So I would think if I'm going back to my days on the planning commission, I would, particularly in my early days when I was on the planning commission, I would want something structurally from staff to guide me through the process. So that's gonna be a work, a work effort on staff. Now, when we talked last about staff reviewing digital clocks, for example, we said we're short-staffed, we don't have time to do it. So I want you to have a conversation with Ned Smither about who's gonna be heavily engaged on staff for this effort. Because I know you are, you're the most qualified and understand zoning and subdivision ordinance probably the best right now. Agree with that?
I, I certainly have the most experience in Powhatan, sure, yeah.
Okay, well, something has to give, okay? If you're gonna be heavily engaged in that and we have an expectation that we're going to want to get this done as soon as possible and not do as Mr. Barley said, you know, go a year. I mean, I, I'm just putting all this out here so that these things can be addressed, you know, before we start the journey. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so I, I think the reality is if you are going to be working with the planning commission, you, you would have the framework, correct? And we're gonna be getting it in dribs and drabs, I think. So we can be monitoring it as it comes from the planning commission. I don't think we're gonna be getting it one lump sum. For instance, commerce center, we're gonna see that and we can see if we like a general pattern.
Madam Chair, I'll, and having a priority that makes sense for us with that, what you're talking about, okay? So that you know the flow, you know, my number one priority, if I was saying it, would, would be commerce center, okay? And so, and you're just going down the line.
If you can get to work on that, then that'd be great.
Yep, we will.
Moving on to old business?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Last month, the board requested that the school board abandoned certain acreage not being used by the, at the Pocahontas Landmark Center. At the school board's December seventh meeting, they decided to defer action on their property, hoping to set up communication with two of their school board members and two of the county board supervisor members, including my, and also myself and the school superintendent, to discuss the property. We have drafted in your, in your board packet, another resolution for their upcoming meeting in January, which gives them basically two options. Excuse me, provides them with two options, a resolution. One option would be exactly what you asked for last month, which would be the entire parcel of unused areas surrounding their administration building. Or a second option would be to abandon just the property to the east of their school and behind Parks and Rec area and leave the two point six acres that's west of the, of the, a, a school admin building in the school board's hands. And basically, it's the same resolution we, we approached with them last month, except now they've got two options. All or, or leave us with the, the, the back recreational piece and they keep the, the two point six acres. So that, that would, that's the piece that includes the upper and lower B hall and D hall. With that in mind, I just wanted to bring it up to your attention. How did you want to handle? Did you want to discuss the conversations with the school board possibly? Or do you want to discuss this resolution going to them? As far as, it's, it's just a draft that Tom prepared for us last month that, that they use, they were gonna use had they gone forward with the, with our request last month, but they, they didn't, they deferred that, so.
Okay, I think we need to talk about a couple of things. These resolutions and at the last school board meeting, I know one of the school board members wanted to have two-on-two discussions about Pocahontas Landmark Center and they were, we were supposed to have, but I wanted to discuss with you all about that because candidly, I don't think that's a good idea.
Madam Chair, I agree with you.
Madam Chair, I agree with you. And I was going to say, that was a suggestion by Rick Cole, Mr. Cole, my district representative, to do that. But there was no agreement even on the school board that that's the approach that they wanted to take. So I'm, I'm not in favor of that approach.
Okay, we agree on that.
At one point during the meeting, they, they actually were wrestling with, how, how can they just give us the back piece and keep part that's on the, the two point six acres?
Now, if I may, Madam Chair, I've been having conversations and I've been pounding the table, going back to our joint meeting where we discussed the Virginia Enquirer Collaborative. I've stressed the importance of having direct communication with the other elected officials. That's why we have elected school boards and elected board of supervisors. So the reason I wanted the joint meeting, as you recall, you know, when you suggested polled us about canceling, I did not want to cancel that meeting because I wanted to have this very conversation with the elected officials, hearing from them. Because what I'm hearing back, you know, in these meetings sometimes is not what I'm hearing from the elected officials. Because again, I'm talking to them, you know, individually and I'm asking them, you know, their druthers on issues and things like that. And so it's not always when I'm getting back from administration in terms of aligning with what they're telling me in conversations. So going forward, I'm gonna continue to pound the table. I want the joint meetings, I want the discussion with the elected officials where I can hear directly from them what their position is on matters like this and not have it filtered coming through staff, okay? So in terms of making any more motions to them about what to do, we said last time, this is their property, not ours. And they, and two of the, two of the school board members have come around to that and they're agreeing that this is their property and they may need, they need to make that decision about what they want to do with the property. Now, we can have the joint meeting coming up. I understand you deferred it to January. I'm interested in going there and having the discussion and hearing from them face to face from school board what their druthers are. And we can discuss these two options there.
To interject real quick, I don't mind having the discussion, but we've been literally, from what I've gathered, talking about this for eight years. Eight years we've been talking about what we're gonna do with these pieces of property. I thought we, Mr. Cox, you've repeatedly said, you know, it's their property, we can't do anything.
Hang on, hang on, I got censored for being repeated. Be careful, be careful.
You have repeatedly said, it's their property. We can't do anything with it until it's ours. They can't do anything with it unless we give them money. So that's kind of, no, that's the, I mean, they could go into their capital maintenance reserve, but, hang on. But we need to approve that if they are gonna dip out of their capital maintenance reserve fund. So my point being is, we've expressed to them multiple times, we would like this property. We would like this property. We have said that to them. They know that. They got into the meeting last time and all of a sudden they were like, well, I, I don't know if we want to give the property up. So for us to go and do it again and say, we want the property, what's the point?
Ma'am?
Yes.
Okay, I've never said I wanted the western wing. I've always been an advocate of get out the wrecking ball, okay? And that goes back to twenty fourteen. Okay, 'cause I've been pounding the table ever since we decided to build a new middle school, I kept asking, what is gonna be the adaptive reuse of the old school? And what's gonna be the cost? I was told in those meetings, we'll figure that out when we get there. So now every time we turn around, there's always something else coming down the road. Well, we might have to do some more preschool. We might have to, you know, use that space. So they're not even sure what they're gonna do over there in the eastern wing, okay? Because that keeps getting kicked around. Now, they do have approximately one point five million in the capital maintenance reserve fund. And yes, you know, if would they wanted to use that, they would have to come to us. Now, they've also got a thing that they do every year with their budget. It's called a capital improvement plan, where they put things in the capital improvement plan that they want to see us fund. So they can make a decision about the eastern wing, about what they want to do. They can make a decision about what they want to do, you know, with the other properties. But I'm, I'm agreeing with you. That's why I'm saying I want closure on what we're gonna do, okay? I don't want, and I want to, like I said, as soon as possible, have those conversations. I was looking forward to it on the fourteenth.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think part of the problem with the decision getting moved down the road has been the interjection of the board of supervisors into, quote, solving their problem. And hinting that they might not get the money to do what they want to do.
Yes.
I think for the very first time, in terms of my conversations with school board members, and I'm talking to them directly, I'm not waiting for it to go through a filter, that they are beginning to understand, of course, that school board is changing, changing pretty dramatically as we speak. It's becoming more assertive and, and I think is getting ready to define what they want to do, which will then lead them to a decision. When will they reach that? I don't know. I don't see any value in, in this resolution tonight, okay? You said, we're prepared to take their, we want their, I'm not part of that we. I'm not part of, I want that business. They're, they're, okay? Now, my counsel to them, to my school board member, is don't do anything without something in writing from us. What do you want, you know, what do you want to use these, this land for? What's it gonna be used for? And does that, is that compatible with student safety, which is my paramount concern? So I'm with, I don't know where this is gonna go, but I'm not prepared to just throw up my hands and, and say that they can't make a decision. I'm not prepared, I'm, I, if they want to take a wrecking ball of those buildings, I will, and they want to use their capital reserve fund, that's fine. We're gonna, we're gonna give them probably some money tonight out of the capital reserve fund. I don't, I don't know of any time that the board has ever turned down one of their requests. Maybe that's because it gets jawboned before, okay? That probably has more of that to do than the actual request, so. But I would align with Mr. Williams. I wanted, I want, I want, I want the conversation with them. What do they want to do?
I'll go out there and say, I don't want to see that building get destroyed. I think we've gotten some quotes back, like if for repairs, you're looking at one point eight, even two million dollars. If you went out and built something even remotely similar to that, you'd be far, far, you know, higher than that. The reality is we have space needs in the county. We have, you know, I know you had mentioned a senior center. I would love to do something with a senior center at some point. I don't know, that could be an adaptive reuse. You have the Habitat project that's out there. I mean, one thing about it, guys, I have children in the Powhatan County Public Schools. Why would a board of supervisors do anything that would potentially, you know, be dangerous or, you know, decrement the schools, you know, having a use next to it? I mean, that would be any of us, you know, committing political suicide. The schools have been toying around with it back and forth for years. I, for one, probably would be a no vote to give them the money to destroy the building. But that's, you know, I'm one person and that's, that's where I'm at.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I look at those two buildings a little bit different. First of all, we talked last year that there was no interest in trying to come up with any money to rebuild it. That, that was, that was the reason we went to the private public partnership. There was, that, 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 nobody on this board was talking about putting up that kind of money. So that, that's why, and then Habitat shows up. From my standpoint, it's really very simple. Now that they have moved after-school program in, if you will, on the east side, okay? And we have an open campus over on the west side. So now, when we start talking about adaptive reuses, that's fine. We got a building that's sitting out there. But now we've got a building, or two buildings that are sandwiched between two very, very sensitive uses. I can't think of a single use that you can put in there that doesn't cause a flow of strangers in and out of that place. And people say, well, you can do this, you can do that. And now, now you're starting to talk about mitigation, okay? The minute you start talking about mitigation with children, I get upset. So I don't, from my standpoint, I'm, I'm with a wrecking ball, not because I want to tear it down, just I don't see anything that will guarantee the safety of the children. Habitat can't do that. A senior center can't do that, because the flow of people who don't belong there, you can't control. That's my only concern, is how you deal with that flow and the protection of children. And for the protection of children, I'm sorry, I want to be way over protective, okay? Should something, you know, you know, we have, we have a Christmas tree parade and that, and that was great, but a few days before that, a week before that, someone killed five people, okay, in a Christmas parade. We have some crazy people out there. And so trying to sandwich uses that invite strangers in between those two functions, I'm just not going there.
Anyone else have any discussion on this?
I do, Madam Chair. Well, one thing that concerns me there is the Christmas mother needs to have her space. There's no ifs, no ands, no buts. I'm probably gonna be on the side of, they need to make a decision. They need to vote, whatever they want to do. And then from that point, we go forward. I, I, I think that, you know, it's kind, kind of interesting to me that everybody's speaking directly to, to school board members, which I think is a good thing. Anytime you can communicate if there's a issue, a problem, the only way you find a solution is if you communicate. So that's a good thing. As long as you're communicating in a way and not sabotaging some.
As long as you're communicating in a way and not sabotaging some, something that what's going on with, with how we're going to proceed forward. Adaptive cost, that's an interesting comment Mr. Williams brought up. And Ms. Carmack, with eight years this has been going on, and most of you have been in the county long enough to know that the previous board agreed to build a $35 million middle school. And a lot of it, I think, was motivated on the fact that this particular school had mold, mildew, and was not in any type of condition to redo it, remodel it, fix it. It created health issues. It created health issues for the teachers, the staff, the administrators, for the students, most importantly. Created all kinds of health problems. And then now all of a sudden, apparently it doesn't create those health problems after it's been vacant for whatever, two years. I have been one to contradict Mr. Cox a little bit there. God, I hope I don't get censored over it.
Just don't say it for once.
The, I, I've been one that, and I think, I agree with Mr. Williams. He's adamantly been a proponent of, you know, the wrecking ball. And I think Mr. Cox has too, and I've sort of been on the other side from the beginning. There's a structure that's there. I think there's something we can do with it. If we tear it down completely, you know, four years ago, it was $300,000 to tear it down. And then once you tear it down, what do you got? And how much do you have to spend? And the 300, maybe 500 now. We're so far out of touch with, you know, what's going on with it in terms of timing. But I think that the school board needs to make the decision. And I agree with Mr. Cox. I was a little slow coming to his way of thinking on the fact that they own it. It's their building. It's their property. And I'm fully prepared to step back and let them own it, if that's what they want to do. Be an owner of it. I think that the right thing to do would be to transfer all of it over to the county. The, the, the safety of the children. I heard this, safety of the children thought brought out a few months ago when we were talking about trails from the Fighting Creek Park over to the school. I'm going to tell you something about the safety of children. Nobody ever wants anything to happen to the children in these schools in Powhatan County. Nobody wants anything to happen to them on the roadways. Nobody wants them to happen anything to them on the school bus. You know, they're our most precious gift. Let's take care of them any way we can. But here's the reality. Can somebody walk through those woods and get to that school? Absolutely. Would you know it? I don't know. You can ride to any of these schools and you can go through the woods at any time you want to go through there and come through. There's just not a guarantee. Do we do everything we can to protect our children? I think so. I want to believe so. I think that there was a survey done three years ago. 95% of the people in this county said they felt very safe. I think if you did the same survey today, I think you'd get the same type of results. 95% of the people feel that they're, they're very safe in this county. Do we have any guarantees? No. Do we want guarantees? Everybody wants a guarantee, but there aren't any. I, I'm one that, I think that this property should go to the county. The schools own it. They get to make the decision. And until they make their decision, I don't know what we need to talk about. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
Mr. Barley. I couldn't agree more. Okay. I'm, I'm with you.
I would like to propose that we move these two resolutions to the school board for their meeting in January. I think they were going to discuss this. This was supposed to be on their agenda item, or January 7th or something like that. Am I correct?
Madam Chair, I would agree with that. If you would also include that as part of a discussion that we just had. We can include the two resolutions, but we can also share with them the discussion we just had among ourselves. If I may go back to Mr. Barley's comments. When I'm meeting with the elected officials, no, I'm not sabotaging. I'm doing the job that people expect me to do in this county, and that is talking to my elected representatives. They are the people that were charged with running Powhatan County schools. And unfortunately, over the years, and Powhatan is not alone, the school board has just been put to the side. And all they were doing was rubber stamping what came through the administration. But it's very important today that that accountability and that responsibility rests with the elected officials. So no, I'm trying to change the paradigm that's existed for a long time, not only in Powhatan, but in the other jurisdictions. Going back to the schools and it's their property. When I talk to the school board members, they say, well, you know, it might be the best thing for us to tear it down and put in a playground. It might be the best thing to tear it down and put in, I'm talking about the wing over to the side where Habitat's looking at. And clean up the property and do something, again, playground, parking lot, I don't know. But they're the people, it's their property. They know what their needs are and they communicate those needs to us in our 10-year CIP. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes. Well, they haven't done it for eight years, so I would like to move for, forward and put these two resolutions in to see if we can have these two proposals.
If they'll address that at the next.
If they will address that at their next meeting.
At their next meeting or a joint meeting?
At their next meeting. That's what I'm saying.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay. Well, do I have a second on this, my request?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Clarify.
Okay. As of right now, we do not have a set date for a joint meeting with the school boards in January. They have their monthly meeting, January 7th. I would, they, at their last December meeting, they said they were going to table it, have two-on-two discussions with the Board of Supervisors, and then they were going to vote on it and bring it up again in their January meeting. We just agreed here tonight that the bottom line, they own the property, they need to determine what they want to do with it. For us to have another meeting and go back and forth, I mean, if they need to determine what they're going to do with it, that is a decision that the five of them need to make. So my point, personally speaking, I would still like to see them do both the property and the building over to the Board of Supervisors. I would like to propose that we send both these resolutions to the schools to vote on, on their January, I think it's 7th.
It's 11th.
January 11th.
It's the second Tuesday, so it would be the 11th.
The January 11th meeting.
Madam Chair, you said, you know, that their meeting, that they were going to, we were going to have the two-on-two, and then we would have the meeting. We haven't had two-on-twos.
We're not doing the two-on-two.
Well, you just said, I believe that we were going to do the two-on-two.
No, no.
Okay, I misunderstood.
I didn't say that.
So like I said, you can send anything you want over there, but I'm going to be communicating with my school board member again, you know, that y'all need to make the decision. This looks like we're trying, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, we are telling they need to make the decision. That's exactly what we're saying.
They need to make the decision, and their decision is not limited to one in two options.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Smithers. These two resolutions, this resolution is what you took them, is it not?
Resolution, except the original resolution only had the one option, which is.
Okay, which, which they've rejected, okay? And that was represented as being something that the board wanted. That was your representation to them that night. And we haven't, we haven't had that discussion until tonight. I'm sorry. I, I won't, I won't support these kinds of directions to them. They've got all the information they need. They've got, they've already rejected one of these. So let them work on it. And let's sit down with them together.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Are you finished, Ms. Cox?
Yes, sir.
My perspective on it is, they're the school board and they're an elected group. We can all have our individual conversations, and I've definitely had mine with them. No ifs, ands, or buts. I'm actually having lunch with one of them tomorrow. I don't have a problem, actually, I'm going to agree with you, that we send these two options over, option one and option two. These are two options that come from the Board of Supervisors. And I think being elected officials, they are in a position to recognize the fact that if they want option three, four, and five, they're more than welcome to come up with that. And they can come up with that, it, whatever they want to come up with. These are just two options that we're putting out there that gives them an opportunity to start a conversation. And if they want to come up with option three, or four, or five, then fine. But my position is, they need to decide what option they want. Then we can sit down and have any conversation they want to have. They own the property. They need to decide what they want to do with their property. They own it. Not us. They own it. It's not in, in Powhatan County's name. It's in Powhatan County Public Schools' name. So if they own it, they make the decision on what to do with it, whether they want to turn it over to the county or not. And they will need to take their vote on that. And then at that point, we can, we can sit and talk about whatever they want to do. But, you know, I think that's the, maybe the.
Madam Chair.
Maybe the, the, the egg, chicken coming before the egg, or the egg coming before the chicken, so to speak, but that's my opinion on it.
Madam Chair, you're about to push this resolution through. Okay? I understand that. With option one and two, and you, please let me finish. I'm sure you have the votes to do it. I would like it made clear to the school board that this is not a unanimous decision coming from, from, from us, that there, we, we have some different points of view.
Absolutely.
That, that's all, just different points of view.
Absolutely. I would encourage them to come and watch this, you know, I mean, absolutely. I have no problem. No problem.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think that maybe pushing these forward may get the ball rolling to make them decide. Because I was at their meeting, their last meeting, I was there till midnight. And they need, they need to be pushed along. I think we need, and you're right, they should be at this meeting, or at least viewing the meeting, to what we talked about. But we, I think we need to get the ball rolling. Just because we sent it forward, doesn't mean that they have to vote on that. They could, like you say, it could be option three, four, five, six, whatever they want, but at least they'll get the ball rolling. And then if they want to have a joint meeting after that, we'll have a joint meeting. We'll discuss it, what they want to do with us.
Exactly.
And we can make the decision together.
Yeah, that's, that's all it is.
We make a motion.
That, that was a motion to do the, move these two to.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the motion? Can you do a roll call for this one?
Sure. Mr. Williams. Mr. McClung.
Yes.
Mr. Cox.
Now, Mr. Barley.
Yes.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. All right, moving on.
Our next topic, coincidentally, is our school board, joint school board meeting schedule. And your, the board's thoughts on when we would do that. We got January, probably organizational meeting on the 18th, and a, and a workshop on the 24th, which is similar to what we, how we handled last January. Question is, when would the board like to have the joint meeting? I'll propose it to the school board to see if they, do we want to do it as soon as the 24th, on the, the 4th Monday?
I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, when is our organizational meeting?
Well, it's, it's what I want to talk about tonight. If, if, if we had an organization meet on the 18th, which would be the first scheduled meeting of January, that would be a Tuesday. And then the following Monday night is the 24th, which is a workshop that we could discuss anything from the planning issues we talked about earlier to have a joint meeting with the school board, or or how we could deal with the 24th, but it's.
The 24th should be our regular meeting.
That's a normal 4th Monday meeting, but.
Not a workshop.
Yeah, which are a workshop.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
What's wrong with having it before the 18th?
What before the 18th?
A joint meeting with the schools.
Well, I think we, do we just vote on that motion?
We voted to send these two resolutions to them.
Well, their meeting is on the 11th.
So this for the 18th for a joint meeting, so we didn't just vote on that.
No, no, no. We, we voted on sending the, the resolution to the school board.
What we're talking about now is the joint meeting.
Yeah, if we want it in January, what date we want it, if we don't want one, if we want five of them, that's what the.
I don't have my crystal ball, so I don't know if they're going to make a decision on the 11th or defer it for another month like they did the last time. That's my point with that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
We meet with them for other reasons other than just the landmark. We say in our strategic plan, we're going to meet once every quarter. So both Bill and I brought forward a list of things when Karen was doing the polling on the joint meeting and counseling it. I came forward with a number of things that I wanted to talk to them about. Okay? Such as, you know, the medical benefit for teachers program that they've got. I shared the email with all of y'all. So no, there's more than one reason for the joint meeting. That's all I'm saying.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Since it's a quarterly meeting, can we just move it down the road from January, February, or March? After they decide what they want to do, or, and then have a joint meeting with them, since it's a quarterly?
I think realistically, we can do whatever we want. And I go back to one thing very quickly, excuse me. The, the functionality of these joint meetings. I know there might be a little bit of a disagreement on how functional they have been. Historically, you know, like I said, Pocahontas landmark, we've talked about things for eight years. The supplemental retirement, we've had that on the agenda the last three times. So what are we getting accomplished and what do we hope to get accomplished? That, that's what I, my takeaway is from this.
Okay, Madam Chair, what my goal is accomplishment, you know, just like I said, you know, when I sent the email in response to the counseling of the meeting on the 14th. They're going into budget season, you're in budget season. I needed them to know where I stood in terms of funding the retirement program. It was coming to a head, okay? Just like with the supplemental retirement program that they had here in the county. It was never going to end. So it was to give them direction about where we stood with regard to funding certain things in their budget. Not to tell them, or not getting information back that they met, and, you know, we got something back from Dr. Jones. But I wanted them to hear from me, from Mike, you, the other supervisors, where we stood on the issues and what we planned to do. But your point is right. The reason we've gone on all this time is because we've simply deferred it over and said, well, staff, get back with us after y'all have a meeting, you know, and then we would get a report. I'm done with that. I'm just as anxious to get closure as you are.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
In terms of things to talk about, we have the transportation facility. The transportation facility has three components that I'm interested in. There is no fleet management program. Particularly for the county. There is a fleet management program over on the school side. We still have mechanics driving buses. That's got to stop. And we're working on a crazy timetable in terms of when they work. Okay? They don't belong on the school system. They belong on a system that serves the entire thing. So we have three basic things about that. And Mr. Barley, as I've listened to him, has buried in and found, found a whole nother list of things. But if we could at least get those three things changed, okay? And that might then tell us who should run it, when you're really trying to manage that. But those are the three components, okay? And th- these are worthwhile discussions. As far as making progress, I think the school board and this board, it's going to take us a while to learn how to have a meeting without it being a series of presentations by administrators. In other words, talking to each other. We're getting better at that. And their, their board is changing in terms of how they see their role with administrators. So that's, you know, I, I see all kinds of reasons, just like David does, to have school board meetings. Our, our strategic plan says we have four a year. I would like to, I'm sorry, just in terms of timing, I would like to have one as, as soon as possible, since we've missed the fourth quarter.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think Mr. McClung brought up a pretty good idea. If we, if we have a school board meeting in February, a joint meeting in February, they don't have their meeting until the 11th, which is the 2nd of January. I know, and, and I've listened to Mr. Williams for, I guess, a couple of months, maybe last month, and he hadn't said it tonight, but tonight's not over. We're getting into our budget season. And I do think that our budget season, unlike the 2020, and unlike last year, I think it will go a lot smoother with Mr. Smithers' program that's all out there that we experienced last year, that we've all said we've been pretty happy with, actually very happy.
that we've all said we've been pretty happy with, actually very happy with. And that should save us a lot of time on the bud, on the budget. But I, I, I don't have a problem moving to February with the schools. And then I'll, maybe just to muddy the water a little bit more, I don't have a problem taking the organizational meeting that's scheduled for the 18th and moving that to the 10th. And then have the joint meeting on the 18th.
What is the 10th?
The 10th is a Monday.
You move it from a Tuesday to a Monday.
Right, the organizational meeting.
Why was it ever on a Tuesday? Why was, why was it ever on a Tuesday in the first place?
I don't want to hear asking that question to you, but I'm thinking it was on a Tuesday because that, you know, was maybe when there was a scheduled joint meeting or something. I don't know. I mean, I.
That's where our workshops are sometimes. We normally do our workshops on Tuesdays. That's why, that's why.
Well, we could do it the night they, well, I don't want to do it the night they have a meeting.
Do it on a Monday.
The 11th, they have their meeting on the 11th.
But do our organizational meeting on the 10th, get it out of the way. Okay.
And then we can set up the 18th. And if they don't make a decision, I won't be too happy to have one on the 18th. I'll tell you that now. But I, I, I'm fine with that. I don't know if that works, if everybody agrees to that or not. Yeah, that's what I keep looking at my phone, I'm at the calendar. They should have their meeting on the 11th, they being the school board. We could do an organizational meeting on the 10th, have a joint meeting on the 18th, and then have a, a regular meeting on the 24th.
Sold.
I agree.
All right, you got that 10th, 18th, 24th. All right, Mr. Cox, you had minutes.
Pam, go to page 50.
Now, in the middle of the page, you see a listing of times and people who talked to us. And then after discussion, okay, right in the middle says, after discussion with members of the board. Do you find that? Carmack, you're still looking.
Page 50.
50.
I'm wrong page, sorry. There we are.
And right in the middle, after discussion with members of the board, Mr. Cox made a motion to defer the decision on the comprehensive plan to the November Board Supervisors. Mr. McClung, that was to give you a chance, okay? Okay, the votes are reversed. David and I voted aye, the three of y'all voted nay. Okay?
I see what you're saying.
I'm just reading.
Yeah, we wanted to keep the discussion of the comp plan that night.
Yes, okay, so, so I made a motion to move it. Okay, and I said you moved it. Okay, so nay says you don't.
It's just reversed.
Just reversed.
The three are reversed.
Okay, now.
Williams, Cox and Barry were, were yeses.
Now.
Byerly and Carmack were nays.
Now we have to go to the next one, same thing. I made a motion to remove two economic opportunity areas. Okay, so Mr. Williams and Mr. Cox voted yes. Mr. Barry, Mr. Byerly and Mrs. Carmack voted nay.
Correct.
Okay. Same, same.
Okey dokey. All right, moving on. Is that, you're dumb, right?
That, that's it, yes ma'am.
Madam Chairman, our first public hearing tonight is case zero dash 2021 dash 28, case 21 dash 11 REZ, Maple Grove at Fine Creek LLC, District Three. Mr. Hopkins is here tonight to go with the case.
It's a fairly simple case. Back in 06, when they rezoned Maple Grove, they had provision for a stub road that would connect to Gray Walls, which is private roads. That road will never connect in today's scenario. VDOT doesn't want it to connect. Part of the reason is that the topography in the area is quite steep. And again, it'll also connect to private roads and Maple Grove is public. So they just want to turn into a cul-de-sac, shorten it a little bit, and that is the request before you time.
We will now have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
Zoom is clear.
All righty, close the public hearing. Questions of staff?
We had two different road systems trying to connect. Gray Walls is privately maintained. Okay, that would never be compatible anyway, would it? No.
Ms. Byerly, it's your district.
I would like to make a motion. Sure. In accordance with Article Two of the Palatine County zoning ordinance and public necessity, convenience, general welfare and good zoning practice, the Palatine County Planning Commission recommends approval, or Palatine County Board of Supervisors recommends approval of the request submitted by Maple Grove at Fine Creek LLC to amend the original proffers of the case. Reason 06 dash 13 to remove proffer number 15, which required the construction of a stub road toward the future Gray Walls development.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? Your roll call.
Mr. Williams.
All right.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mr. Cox.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
Ms. Carmack.
Aye. Moving on.
Our next case, zero dash 2021 dash 29, case number 21 dash 12 REZ. Madam Chair, it's a brief intro in this project. And in advance of December 7th, Planning Commission, a public hearing was advertised requesting a rezoning of parcel 42 dash 9F, a 19.7 acre site purchased for the new Eastern Convenience, Eastern Convenience Center with additional uses on the front Route 60 acreage. The original rezoning request was for I-2 to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission denied the I-2 request. The resolution in front of you tonight requests that the board approve a zoning designation of Commerce Center as that zoning will accommodate the convenience center and provide attractive zoning for future users on the Route 60 acreage. Mr. Hopkins and Mr. Shardine are here tonight. Did you have any questions on this, on this resolution for this public hearing?
Mr. Hopkins, do you want anything before we have the public hearing?
He summed it up pretty well.
All right, we'll now have the public hearing on this case. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Finally got the right time. Okay, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Elizabeth Meyer, Rick Gallier's daughter, and a representative of South Creek. So we have some concerns about the convenience center. And I've reached out to Brett a couple of times. We have met and we went over what's proposed. We've only seen a Google Maps. We've not seen any type of preliminary site plans. I do think it's too early to vote on this as we've not gotten our questions answered. And some of those questions that we have, has there been a traffic study? What's the impact going to be on South Creek having all those roads come through? And what about trash? Who's going to pick up trash? No one's really been able to give me these answers. But I think without a comprehensive plan or any type of preliminary site plans, we've seen nothing from y'all. We talk about transparency. Where's the transparency for us? Why aren't we seeing what you're proposing to do on the Irvine property adjacent to South Creek? So all that we're asking is for a site plan. We want to see exactly what you intend to do. What's going to happen with the property that front 60? How are they going to have ingress and egress? Are they going to have access to 60? Are they going to use Detroit Creek? Are you going to propose that they access Carter Gallier? We would like to know more on what that traffic's going to look like. What happens if the road doesn't continue to go through the Irvine property and connect through over Morris Industries? Again, how does that can impact the users of South Creek? I have to look at the marketability of South Creek, and that's my main concern. We've been talking about a convenience center for 15 years. 15 years, Rick was able to, or talked to y'all about giving property on Church Road for this convenience center. And now you want to do this and do eminent domain, take it through commercial parks. I've never seen a convenience center go through a commercial park. It's always been freestanding. So what is that going to mean to the landowners in there? I think we all have a right to know, and without seeing a preliminary site plan, a traffic study, the citizens aren't really seeing what's going on other than a Google Maps and a few sketches here and there. So I'd like to see something a little more definitive.
Thank you, ma'am.
Happy holidays.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
David Anderson, 2366 Bellecris Circle. Good evening and happy holidays. I've got a few comments that somewhat echo what the previous speaker just mentioned. I'm not here to advocate, advocate for or against the rezoning proposal. I am, I am here to advocate that you hold this particular applicant to the same standard and scrutiny that you hold every other rezoning case applicant to. As an example, I find it highly unusual that the applicant nor the staff submitted a single proffer for this particular rezoning case. As a contrasting example, in the case you heard just before this case, that particular applicant had 16 proffers associated with its rezoned case. Furthermore, when reviewing this case, the Planning Commission also stated numerous times that they had some problems with the inconsistent application of this particular rezoning case. One commissioner stated it felt like a quote "backdoor proposal" end quote. Another commissioner stated, quote, "we should all play by the same rules," end quote. This applicant, like all applicants, simply deserves a comprehensive, thorough and objective review of their entire project, both the public component and the private component. I look forward to your thoughtful deliberations. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Hopkins or Mr. Shardine, do y'all have questions of staff? Or would you also care to acknowledge, or I don't know if you have any answers for any of the speakers that have come down, if you wanted to?
Yeah, I think those are fairly persuasive arguments on some level. On the other hand, the county can build the convenience center itself without going through the rezoning is kind of part of it.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Hopkins, can you speak a little closer to the mic? You're kind of tall, so it's kind of hard to hear you.
Bob Barkered again.
I know. Just speak louder.
Yeah, or that. So, you know, we can put the convenience center in without the rezoning. The idea was really to try and make the holistic lot, something more marketable. I think the idea of having many proffers, that was the case from 2006, which is a lot of proffers for a large residential subdivision. I think it's slightly different, but it's, it's not a bad point. But when it comes to the comp plan or even a comprehensive, large proactive rezoning, you likely wouldn't have a significant number of proffers. And we're about to have, you know, general, general commercial go to CC. There's not going to be a large amount of proffers being placed on that en masse. So when the government comes in to do a rezoning like this, I'm not so sure what proffers we would place on it. That being said, when we go to sell this property, we can do deed restrictions at that point or control who the buyer is, also I think, that sort of thing. And that will be a public process that will come forward in this realm. So I, I think it's a very persuasive argument that they make about that. But at the same time, it's kind of apples, oranges in a lot of other realms. So it's just kind of my two cents, I guess.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Hopkins. On page 124. At the top, says this proposal will rezone this parcel in its entirety to I-2. That's not what you're doing.
Yes, there was.
So is that correct or not correct?
There was a number of revisions to this going late, honestly.
So, so that, that's getting away, so that shouldn't be in there, right?
Well, it's, it's up to the board.
Commerce Center.
Okay, he's already said it shouldn't be in it.
Sure.
Thank you. I have some other question. Go to page 127. Countrywide, countywide, future land use plan. You say this designated property is industrial. It is not. It is gateway business.
No, it is not.
Okay, I want you to go back and read on page 50. All of the changes that we made and voted on on a comprehensive plan, you will not find any changes for industrial. You're wrong.
It is my understanding that it is unindustrial.
It's not. You know, and if we had a comprehensive plan, maybe we could look it up and see it. It's gateway business, sir. The Planning Commission told you it was not industrial. The reason this thing was confusing to the Planning Commission, and they didn't feel like they were getting the entire story. And they weren't. They weren't getting the entire story at all. Mr. Smith, you want, okay, we got, here's another packaged product which got teed up without having proper discussion about what was going to happen in reality. You want to explain what we're really doing with this, Mr. Smith? Private partnership, how that's working?
Yeah, at this point, we see the property rezoned to Commerce Center. And Mr. Cox has a great idea on your part because.
No, no, I'm not talking about the rezoning. I'm talking about how we're going to, how we're going to merge, how we're going to handle all of this.
We, we're, we've got four or five options. One of them is public-private. One of them is our own development. We don't know which way is going to go. We hope we'll get some good alternatives on, on both sides of defense to go with. At this point, we've got nothing other than our own, our own tools, which are bid, bid and procure the services. Until we get a public-private partnership, we've got nothing to talk about.
Miss, Miss Smith, in our conversations, what you told me was.
We're hoping.
Well, no, what you told me was, and I thought it was a good idea, is when you looked at the cost of the convenience center, that it looked to be excessive to you. So you went looking for different ways to do this.
I did that.
Okay, and the way you were looking at it was a public-private partnership, where we would have someone build the convenience center for us to our specs, and then we would turn around and give them the residual properties to market. Okay, and so your plan at that point was to use it as I-2. No one liked I-2. That's not the vision of the board. The vision of the board is the comprehensive future land use plan, which is gateway business. So now we're kind of back to where, but if we started at the beginning of this, which was you saw a problem, found a solution, but didn't tell anybody the solution. When, when looking at it, after you and I had that conversation, you explained what you were looking at, okay? And what you, and you never know whether that'll work to, to the private sector actually comes in and gives you some proposals. I thought that was a smashing idea. But in fact, it would have been very helpful if our Planning Commission had known that about what we were trying to do. So I, that's, they felt like they were left out. They didn't feel like they were getting a complete story, and they weren't. The complete story is actually a very good one.
If it comes through, Mr. Cox.
No, but it's, okay. And so to answer some of the questions about proffers, if we zone, rezone this to Commerce Center, then it's by right of development, and we can't ask for proffers. Okay, okay. So just that simple, that's where we're going. In here on page 128, you have a discussion on deed restrictions. And you say staff recommends placing the use restrictions found above into the deed at the time of sale. There are no restrictions listed here.
When it got changed from I-2 to CC, most of the uses we'd be most scared of would be gone.
We don't need deed restrictions, I don't think. I don't, I don't think that's even a, a conversation with it going to Commerce Center, is it?
The pattern book will be in play for us. That's.
No, no, that, that, that's part of Commerce Center, but we don't, this is an add-on. We don't, I don't see that we need deed restrictions for going to Commerce Center.
This is just an analysis. I mean, I don't think it's.
Yeah.
It's.
I mean, that's, it looks like to me that was something that should have been taken out that was left, leftover from the Planning Commission. That, I just want to make sure. So my question now is to Mr. Lackney. We have told the public I-2. And now we're proposing something that is dramatically different. Why can't we do that? Why don't we have to re-advertise it?
I think I-2 is a more, more generalized, more expansive use. CC is a more restrictive use. Typically, the way the law is, if you advertise as worst-case scenario, you can go to better cases, which I-2 would be for the public worst-case scenario for the number of uses and the intensity of use. And therefore typically, the courts allow, if you're diminishing the intensity, to continue with the advertising because the assumption.
I could, I could put an apartment complex in here. I could advertise by I-2 and put an apartment complex.
I think, I think going from commercial to residential would be a significant enough change.
But you're, I mean, because we got a lot of uses. So the point is, if you're comfortable, you're on a hook for it if somebody doesn't like it, so. Okay, I like the fact that we're finally getting back to where we, we should be. If we had done nothing, absolutely nothing, what would have happened?
We would put the convenience center in play. We would put the convenience center in place. We would have had, I guess, fewer economic opportunities, perhaps, it'd be less attractive.
It would have become Commerce Center. Okay? Y'all already changed, this is, this is general commercial, and it's going to be upgraded to Commerce Center, even if we don't do anything, unless we, unless we turn down.
That's not technically correct, because I don't believe there's any structures on it. We're only going after structures in the growth areas as far as that rezoning is concerned.
Right. Madam Chair?
Yes, sir.
That, it's raw land now, and, and that's, doesn't, that's not Commerce Center. Not even, well, it's general commercial is what it is. I'd like to do this. In, in terms of, you kind of got bashed there a little bit, Mr. Smithers. I think if you told Mr. Cox about the plan, that was pretty transparent, wasn't it? Seems like to me it would be. That's sharing information. And I think as long as he's sharing the information, that's putting the information out. And to me, the bottom line is, he can present all the options to us that we can handle, which I think is what I would like from it. Give us all the options we can have. The bottom line is it comes to this board, and we vote on it. He doesn't get the vote. He doesn't get to sign off on it. We have to vote. And I can certainly appreciate your, your, your perspective of, you know, how you want to go about analyzing and diagnosing it, but I'm gonna go back to something you said earlier, Mr. Cox. How about some unity? Let's find a little way here to be a little bit nice and talk to everybody in a way that, you know, let's have a little bit of respect. He's the county administrator. He's the man that we voted five oh to hire. I understand he works for us, and we can be a little bit on the critical side of how he operates and what he does, but I think that it's probably a great opportunity here to say, thanks for being transparent and sharing the information. That's all, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
The information wasn't shared, had to be pried out, Mr. Farley. But, you know, you run out of things to censor me on. Okay? There's nothing else you can do to me. Okay? Nothing else you can take away from me. So the process, had the planning commission understood what was going on, you'd have had a different reaction from them. Now, this is not, the fact that it's raw land doesn't mean it's Commerce Center. It has nothing to do with the fact it's raw land. What it is, is general commercial, and we have already approved a process to move everything that is general commercial to Commerce Center.
I said it was general commerce, after, after I corrected myself. So I, I got it.
Okay.
All right. If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
I have questions, and I'll make a statement as well. Mr. Cox is indeed right. The planning commission was confused. The issue at the planning commission was, nobody could understand the efficacy of why we would want to do I two on Route sixty. That was a sticking point. They, they didn't understand what the county administrator's options were, because it was never explained where we were going. And it was only after, you know, we got beat up, you know, going down the road, that we figured out, you know, maybe I two isn't the way to go. Maybe we need to go Commerce Center for the reasons, you know, Mr. Cox put forward, we're already moving from the transitional district, general commercial, moving to proactively move the properties to Commerce Center. So that, that was the, the concern at the planning commission level. They were, like Mr. Cox, once I went to Mr. Smith and Mrs. Smith explained to me, you know, what we were doing, I was for it. I think it's a good idea. I support it. So let me now ask some questions, if I can, of staff, addressing concerns of some of the speakers at the public comment. Mr. Hopkins. One of the concerns was, have we done any type of traffic impact study to see what the impact was going to be on the traffic network in South Creek, or maybe sixty, or maybe Du Toy? And I know, know, some of this hadn't been decided, for example, like with Du Toy. But when would we do a traffic study? Would we do that at the type of a site plan review? Because you've got a list of things here in the staff report that says it happens when somebody comes in. All site plans are evaluated to ensure their proposed development adheres to standards, step forward in Article eight, development standards, vehicle access and circulation. But would you do, going back to Ms. Meyer's, you know, concern, a traffic impact study to see what the traffic trip generation would look like going through South Creek and potentially over to Old Church Road? Would we do that to make sure that the projected number of users from, not only the, you know, what we're saying for the convenience center, but would you project forward to for the other two parcels that we're doing, going to Commerce Center, to get an idea of what type of transportation network needs to be in place to support the proposed development going forward? Would we do that?
Typically, that happens at the rezoning phase.
At what?
Typically, that happens at the rezoning phase with an applicant.
Okay, but we're not doing a rezoning in this. And that's our concern. They don't know what's coming and that, you know, and I can understand that concern because, you know, they've got an investment over there in South Creek of their properties. So if you're going to be using the internal circulation over in South Creek, and you're going to be going over potentially, you know, to the back there to Church Road, Old Church Road, which is a tar and gravel road, by the way. Okay? Brett, you, you, you think, I think you've got the answer here.
So on the, the traffic study, we, we have not done a traffic impact analysis on it. You know, one reason you would typically do that at rezoning, if it was a private developer, is the rezoning is your one chance. You have them on the hook. Once you pass that, if you find there's traffic issues, you're not going to be able to make them to it. In this case, it's somewhat unique, and it's our project. So we could do one ahead of time. I think it's gonna, we're gonna spend money and time for it to tell us it's fine. But the fact is, it's our project. If we find there's issues, then we're going to address them. We're not a private developer where we need to put ourselves on the hook with that, that traffic study ahead of time with the remainder of the property. When the board, you know, decides we find a future user and want to lease or sell the property at that time, I think it could be appropriate, depending on the use that we, part of the deal is we need to get a traffic study done, make sure that's appropriate. But for rezoning it now for our own uses and purposes, I, I, that's why we haven't recommended the traffic study. We're going to do what needs to be done.
Well, let's just say we go ahead and do this tonight, and I'm addressing again Ms. Meyer's concern. If we go ahead and do this tonight, do we know, for example, how many potential users, i.e. trips, would result from the, just the convenience center?
Public Works has an, an idea of what that would be like based on the other center we operate. So we have some, you know, rough, rough ideas of what it would be. And, you know, as you know, we've applied twice now to extend Carter Gallier's smart scale projects, and part of that, we've done thorough review and vetting with VDOT's engineering and traffic studies team about how that would work. So they're certainly comfortable that, once we connect that, it would flow and, and work, and, and no concerns there. So I think bringing this, compared to this, the, the whole scheme of, of South Creek and the larger picture, bringing an additional, you know, ten acres or so online is, is relatively minimal.
I'm, I'm more worried right now about the convenience center and the trip generation, you know, coming through, you know, the back of Food Line going into the convenience center. That, that would be the primary ingress and egress, wouldn't it?
Correct.
Okay, then, then down the road, I understand about what we can do with the commercial properties. But right now, just, you know, looking at the convenience center, have we done any type of analysis to know what the traffic looks like and have what impact going through the back of Food Line?
I mean, the roads there, the majority of them in there, except for the last section that cuts this, are all VDOT public roads built to an industrial standard. So we, we feel comfortable, Public Works feels comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, Brett, I, you know, I, I agree with you. The entrance there is built to industrial standards because it's going to the cement plant and asphalt plant in the back, so it's a higher standard because you've got mixed-use trucks. But what I'm, what I'm getting at is when I go up to the convenience center today, and the reason, you know, we're doing the second convenience center is because, you know, we sometimes on different days, they back up, you know, almost to Route sixty. I'm sure, you know, with the second convenience, you know, it's, we're not going to have that egregious of a problem. But I'm just trying to give Ms. Meyer and the, you know, the folks that have their businesses over South Creek, that we're not doing something that's going to decrement their business, because you can't have good economic development with a good access management.
Correct, certainly. And I mean, South Creek is one of the economic gems in the county that we have to market. It's got all the infrastructure, you know, all, all ready to go. So we certainly would not want to do anything to hurt the prospects for developing that. And I think, long-term, extending and connecting Carter Gallier, you know, we would-
Yeah, yeah. Hey, you, you and I had this conversation yesterday. Okay? I'm having conversations right now because, you know, that's been, you know, something we've, you know, prioritized through smart scale, and we want that parallel road. So I know that part will work. What I'm saying is, until we can get the rest of Carter Gallier over there, you know, to behind Walmart, connecting to Luckstone Entrance, what I'm worried about is what is the impact on the transportation network there at South Creek?
Yeah, and, and to get Public Works, based on their experience from operating the other center, you know, this was their top pick and traffic and queuing, and all that was part of it, and they had no concerns with impacting others in there. Certainly, as we go through the site plan in more detail, developing it, we can work with VDOT and make sure we have proper stacking until South Creek fully connects to Luckstone Road, you know, share that with the board. But again, we've had no, no concerns that it would, you know, unduly impact the traffic infrastructure there.
Okay, like I said, I don't know. Right now, I have nothing to show me about what is the projected traffic counts, you know, for, you know, a second convenience center. So I, I don't know. I'm kind of flying in the dark here. But what I would hate to do is to put in a convenience center and then find out that it really can't work over there, you know, going through the back and then connecting to the main entrance, or maybe then going out the back way on Carter Gallier to, you know, Old Church Road. I, I would like to have some comfort level, but I'm not going to build a convenience center and then say, I can't mitigate the traffic, you know, the trips, you know?
Yeah.
Because, because I got that one way in and out right now until we complete all of Carter Gallier.
Yeah, and we have some options with the, the Du Toy access as well, that that could be used if, if we find there's a need for either in or out. You don't think we want to see that as a full movement intersection, but that could be possibly an, an exit or-
Do, do we, do we own the right-of-way there for the Du Toy? Are, are we leasing that from Luckstone?
It's, the right-of-way is owned by Luckstone, but we have an easement over it.
For how long?
I believe it's in perpetuity.
Okay, so would that give us the ability, if we wanted to make an improvement there?
It's dedicated for public purposes.
And have, what, what is this, what is the right-of-way there? Is it, how many feet?
I don't recall, but it's, it's, I think it's a decent width to it beyond the existing road width that we have currently.
Let me ask you a question. Mrs. Meyer's concern about only getting satellite pictures and not getting questions answered from the businesses and her. What's, what's going on there? Is, is that something that we need to address?
Regarding the, the litter, Public Works had said between, you know, their ability and contractor's ability to clean up, you know, can't speak for anti-litter council, but they might be somebody that can help out, as well as we talked to Department of Corrections and the ability to use prisoners out there. So between all of those available resources, you know, they had no concerns about being to keep it clean in South Creek and not having trash piling up. So I believe that was shared with, with South Creek.
Well, her concern was she didn't have good maps. She said, all the thing we're getting is Google Maps.
Yeah, and all, all we have developed at this point was the very conceptual, conceptual sketch that Public Works put together. So that was what was shared with them. So I think she means we don't have a engineered site plan at this point, because we don't. If, you know, once we do, we'll share that with them right away.
But we can go forward, and we're going forward anyway with rezoning, as, as Mr. Cox, you know, put forward. The property is going to go to Commerce Center anyway.
And on that, so what the, the board initiated last month, the month before, to planning commission, that would only relate to properties that meet a couple of criteria. One, currently zone, zone, general commercial. Two, within a comp plan growth area recommended for gateway business, or there might be one or two industrial, and have an existing structure on them. So this one being vacant property would, would not be in that proposal currently.
So we would have to do it, is what you're saying?
Correct. And we had talked about rezoning vacant general commercials might be a good kind of phase two next step, but why don't we just start with the ones that have existing businesses? Those ones aren't causing any issues. It'll, it'll help existing users continue there. So properties like this would, would not be in that proposal currently. So not, not changing zone currently.
Are you comfortable going forward tonight?
Yeah, as long as the county retains the property, you know, we, we don't lose any control, there'll still be-
No, I'm, I'm saying, are you, are you comfortable that, you know, Ms. Meyer's concerns are, are going to be addressed, that, that they're going to be okay, that nothing's going to happen that's going to decrement their investment?
Yes, and it's a large part of my role is also economic development. Again, South Creek is-
It's a jewel.
The best asset we have, so I certainly do not-
Again, we, but like I said, what I need to know from you, as my economic development director and your rich history in planning, is you're comfortable with us going forward tonight and going ahead and rezoning this, and your comfort level is such that you don't see anything that we can't address that's going to be of concern to Ms. Meyer and those property owners?
I think the issues can be addressed, and we'll continue to work with them. And if they have other concerns, you know, that I think there's, anything that comes up, we want to try and mitigate and resolve. But again, we like the location, Public Work likes location, and feel like we can make it work there.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I move we approve rezoning case zero two zero two one dash two nine.
This is my district.
Oh, sorry, I was getting ready to move it along. It's nine thirty.
That's okay, go ahead.
Okay. Do I have a second? Anybody got a second? Any questions or comments on the motion?
I'm going to be following this project closely, and Brett, I appreciate your assurances that staff is going to be able to address any concerns going forward. And I'm going to encourage you to continue and reach out to Ms. Meyer and the businesses over South Creek to give them updates and keep them at a comfort level, you know, with this project as we go forward, and I know you will.
Madam Chair, if I might also, just to give Ms. Meyer some comfort, we cannot dispose of that front parcel, even though we rezone it to CC if we do tonight. It would require another public hearing to even be able to sell it. So there would be a public process. We couldn't sell it next week to somebody. It would be a-
So nothing's going to happen right away?
Nothing's, there would have to be the whole public hearing process to sell that.
So we got time to build that comfort level with, you know, the property and the business owners and Ms. Meyer. Right, Brett? Your head's going up down, so I was saying, yes.
Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi. Moving on, our-
Next case is zero dash twenty twenty-one dash thirty, case twenty-one dash zero one dash EXC. Ricky B. Andrews, Mr. Hopkins, please.
Yes, this is a subdivision exception to allow for a family division. It's located at thirty-one fifty Huguenot Trail. The lot is fourteen point three acres. The minimum size for family division is eight acres with a three and five remainder. In this case, Mr. Andrews, I think had a stroke, he's in ill health. His wife also is elderly and has, I think, having a knee replacement or something like that, having a hard time keeping up all of this land. Mrs. Andrews' sister would like to move and use the family division exception to take three acres and build a house and help them take care of the property is the overall ostensible reason for the exception application. All of those reasons are kind of personal life circumstance type of reasons, and aren't really the type of thing that rise to the level of, say, a hardship to cause an exception. However, our, our family division regulations provide for you have to have ownership of the lot for five years and that you, you give it to a family member that's an immediate family member. Mrs. Andrews had been married to Mr. Andrews for six years, but just wasn't on the deed. So I think if you think about the spirit of this law, and maybe not the strict regulation So I think if you think about the spirit of this law and maybe not the strict regulation of that law, you had to just simply been on the deed, it would have been administrative sign off. So I think under any normal circumstances, had I received this application, I probably would have said, well, this isn't even approached the, the level of a hardship. If we were feeling generous about it and this is just a technicality and we want to help a land owner out, then I think simply rectifying the fact that they didn't have the foresight to put their name on a deed six years ago, then you could approve the subdivision exception. I'll take questions.
Do we have to have a, we don't have to have a public hearing on this too?
No, you don't have to have a public hearing.
Do you all have any questions of staff?
Yes. This is going to be a question from Mr. Blackney. Tom, Frank just said, there's, you know, a technicality, you know, this whole business about not being on the deed. The clauses that we have that qualify for hardship that are listed here, there are three. Do they come from Dakota, Virginia?
They are, they are extrapolated from various code sections in the state, I guess.
Okay, we had a similar case where, you know, we did one of these and you later, you know, shared with us that we made a mistake. We legally couldn't do it. Is that correct?
I did do that. And I don't think we legally can do this one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry, what was your last statement?
I don't believe we can legally do this one. I think circum, the, the exception law wasn't so broad that you basically rewrite family division law, which is what we're looking to do. Exceptions are modifications, not total rewrites of the family, because that's what we're literally talking about is a rewrite. It may be maybe an oversight. It may not have been an oversight. There may have been tax reasons why and six years ago, the name wasn't added, but to, I don't think we have the legal authority under the exception law to literally rewrite the state family division law, which is what ours is based on, which requires immediate family members.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I have a suggestion. We have something that exists, you know, for a second dwelling for medical reason. Mr. Hopkins, wouldn't this apply?
So I believe that the applicant researched putting in a second dwelling as we, we do have that provision. The second dwelling has to be half the square footage of the primary one. The tricky part for that is someone who tries to finance that might not be able to get that done since they don't own the land.
If he puts the wife's name on the deed.
Wait five years.
It would be five years. Okay, so legally we can't do it.
Well.
Sorry, I'm thinking out loud now. We, I actually recommended we delete this and we didn't. He can do a family division to the wife. That he can do because I suggested we take that out and we didn't.
Okay.
And so our, our ordinance allows a family division from one spouse to another, so he could family divide to the wife.
Okay.
But then how do you finance the lot?
Well, she'd have, she'd have to be on the deed of trust, but I'm, I'm just trying to figure out a way to.
That's not a bad idea.
Excuse me. Would she, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, would she have to be on the deed of trust for the house that gets built, for the structure that gets built?
Well, on the mortgage? If the family divide her three acres, I'm not, I'm not a lender, but I assume they would want.
Want her on there.
Because she's going to be owner of the parcel. Now, typically, I mean, I know I bought a house where my, my wife was on the deed of trust, but not on the loan. So, so in other words, I need to foreclose. My wife was on it, but she wasn't on the loan itself. I know banks will structure it that way. So I, that, that would be a solution, maybe. Just, just trying to be helpful.
Okay, no, that's helpful. Thank you.
Madam Chair, could we defer this? I mean, it's either that or turn it down.
I was going to say, I'd rather turn it down and then find, just tell them, go find another solution.
Okay.
You know, so tell my apologies. It's not, I came in here with full intent of doing it, but, okay.
But look at the family dividing to the wife, if that is a solution.
I move we deny two zero two one dash zero one EXC. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments on the motion? All those, and I will do a roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung. Mr. Cox.
Hi.
Mr. Barley.
Hi.
Ms. Carmack.
Hi.
All right, we'll now have our second public comment period. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward and state your name and full address for the record. You have three minutes for an individual or five minutes if you're speaking for a group.
David Anderson, twenty three sixty six, Bell Crest Circle. I'd like to make two comments. Both of them relate to what I believe the message the board is sending to the public. The first one in regards to the convenience center we just discussed. The agenda clearly said it was a rezoning case and I clearly think you rezoned the property. And I found it hard to believe you would rezone any other case or any, any other property without doing the due diligence on that particular case. Traffic study is a perfect example. This particular project's going to have hundreds of cars every day and yet we don't require a traffic study. And we are essentially saying, hey, we trust that Brett and his team is going to do the right thing and they probably will. But to me, the message you're sending me is we trust the county employees, but we don't trust the county citizens to do the right thing. So I just want you to think about that a little bit. The second thing, I just want to echo, a gentleman in the beginning of the meeting said that he appreciates the job you do and the hundred fifty five pages that you read. And it is a tough job. I understand that and I respect you as well. I'm sure it was a tough and uncomfortable night tonight up there on the stage. And I want you to know that it was also a very, very uncomfortable night down here. Not necessarily because we are concerned about you as individuals, because you as the board are a reflection of us. And tonight was not the reflection of who we are. We are respectful. We are neighborly. We are forgiving. As you, the board, move forward, I trust you'll choose to move forward in a manner that lives up to who we are. I think the second half of tonight's meeting was a step in that direction on.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Hi, Terry Stratton, two nine four zero Lake Grease Drive. Wow, didn't expect to actually make it into a meeting. I never watch myself on video, so thanks for that. It makes me wonder if my out of context comments were used to help Mr. Cox's defense or if it was retaliation against a private citizen by a sitting supervisor. I'm also going to argue that Mr. Cox did get in his fifth knife, knife twist because he deliberately misled the public once again by only playing a video of a small part of my comments. I urge everyone to go to YouTube and search Powhatan Board of Supervisors Meeting, November twenty second, twenty twenty one, and go to the one hour and seven minute mark and watch my comments and Mrs. Hertzler's comments in their entirety. And so you can see this nonsense for yourself and not the smoke and mirrors game Mr. Cox is playing with all of us. What I didn't hear from Mr. Cox in that long defense was an apology to Mrs. Carmack, Mr. Barley and the citizens of Powhatan County. Again, I find all of this extremely disappointing, appalling, unethical and unprofessional. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mike Chris, thirty eight oh one, Ben Terrill Drive. I was on Zoom at work, watching this, had my hand raised. But Zoom was clear. I heard what you said, Bill. I watched the video. To not come down with a yes vote to Centuria is unreal. It would be like sitting there watching these guys go into a jewelry store bash the counters and they say it didn't happen. It happened. That being said, wrong is wrong, right is right. Okay? And Mr. Williams, you're embarrassed? I was embarrassed too. Okay, we're sitting here talking about a Christmas tree and centering a supervisor. Big waste of time. No. Wrong is wrong, right is right. No matter how many, you represent me, I'm District Four. Look. Y'all can't even get together tonight. Get along. Mr. Williams, it's clear you don't like Mr. Barley. Mr. Cox, it's clear you're going to do whatever Mr. Williams wants. Okay, you go back and look at all the videos on YouTube. That's the way it rolls out. It's easy to see when you're out here. But can't believe I'm going to say this because I have my phone in my dash on the way here, trying to get here as quick as possible for this moment. I agree with you for once. School Board, Board of Supervisors meetings need to happen, joint meetings. CRT, I'd have never known anything about it. We're still in this consortium? I don't know. But I do know this. When I watched the school board up here with you guys and they all defer to the cat bird that's leaving, thank God. Who, who's in charge? The superintendent or the school board that hired him? That blew my mind. But he's gone. And the school board, Board of Supervisor meeting, joint meetings need to continue. Ms. Carmack.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow Board of Supervisors. I'm Billy Melton. I live at forty eight fifty five old Buckingham Road. And I too was sitting at home listening to the meeting and decided to come up. I agree with Mr. Williams and the gentleman who just spoke. This is an embarrassing moment for the county. We will recover. And the way we recover is through y'all's actions and the way you treat each other. I do think the actions of Mr. Cox were clear. He intended to mislead four times. He misled. He did it several times tonight. I want to thank Mr. McClung, Mr. Barley, Ms. Carmack for the thought. I'm sure it took much of your thought and then make, to make the difficult decision is part of the resolution. It was the right thing to do. Mr. Cox continues tonight to attack staff and they assume to attack Mr. Smithers. Talks about black meetings. Mr. Cox has been involved in black meetings, if you want to use that term, but yet when someone else does it, he tends to throw the stone. So how do you move forward? I have to eat you to look in the mirror and ask yourself, how can you respect, listen openly bring things forward, to close. I further ask Mr. Cox to humble himself and ask himself if any of your actions have brought about the reactions from your fellow Board of Supervisors. Mr. Cox, as you told me many times when I sat in this chair, I'm embarrassed that you're my supervisor. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have somebody on Zoom, correct?
We do, Madam Chair. B, I've got your hand raised on, on Zoom. B, can you hear me?
You there?
B, you just muted. Try one more time. Unmute. One more time, B, we got you on mute. If you don't mind trying to unmute and we'll be ready to roll. B, is your hand still raised?
Is it down?
It's still there, but she's on mute or he's on mute.
Okay.
I don't know who B is.
Okay, well. All right. Sorry.
Yeah.
I don't.
Oh, she's, I'm sorry. B, go ahead. You had it off mute. Now it's back on mute.
You had it there a second ago. Try one more time. You can, another option, you can email county admin, admin@powhatanva.gov, your comments, and we will be sure to get them and we can put them in the packet. If that, you know, gives you a little more of a comfort level. So an option. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay, seeing no one else, I will close the public comment period, county attorney comments.
Just a couple, Madam Chair, I don't usually have any, but I just got back from a week in Fort Myers, Florida where it was eighty five degrees and sunny every day. But I'm honestly glad to be back home in Powhatan where I live in Mississippi County. And I'm glad I live here and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas.
Thank you, sir. Any administrator comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, again, I'd like, also like I say, Merry Christmas to everybody. We had, we did have an incident tonight with the Sheriff's Department at Lake Shawnee. It was getting some attention. You noticed me getting up a couple of times during the meeting, so I apologize for interrupting your presentations, but everything is fine now and we'll find out more details tomorrow as to what happened out there, but that was the distraction that I had during the meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Holly, would you bring up, this is my Christmas picture? The name of it is Everybody Needs a Santa. Even Mr. Williams. You look happy, Mr. Williams.
You told me I was going to get what I asked for.
Oh, good. That's it, Madam Chair.
Any other board comments?
I have one comment I want to make, wanting something I want to bring up real quick. I know it's late, but it's going to be really quick. I want to bring up real quick tax relief for the elderly and the disabled for next year's budget to get it on board. So maybe we could do something about it. The current parameters are sixty five years old and a maximum of fifty thousand dollars a year income and two hundred thousand dollars in assets, not including the dwelling in one acre land. Relief is a maximum of eight hundred dollars. That means if they qualify, then they get up to eight hundred dollars. If their bill is under eight hundred dollars, they get the whole bill. If it's over eight hundred, then they max out at eight hundred dollars relief and have to pay the rest of the bill. These parameters have been the same since two thousand and eight, so it hasn't been looked at. And so using very broad numbers, assessments have gone up thirty, fifty percent since two thousand and eight. The tax bills have gone up higher than that. One example is a dwelling built in nineteen seventy, fifty one years old, owned by the same owner. There have been no upgrades or improvements made to the dwelling. A two thousand and eight dwelling, hundred sixty five thousand dollar tax rate at seventy one cents per hundred equals one thousand one hundred seventy one dollars, fifty cents in tax. The relief is eight hundred dollars and they still have to pay three hundred seventy one dollars. It's not doing what it needs to do. I mean, this is an increase, this is a seventy three percent increase in the tax they pay on a typically a fixed income. My recommendation is to raise the amount of relief to twelve hundred dollars. The fifty thousand dollar income level seems to be adequate, looking at it. We could consider increase to the asset side of two hundred fifty thousand or three hundred thousand. I'll consider this scenario because just like the tax file asset values have increased at almost the same as the taxes have since two thousand and eight. As far as the tax exemption for the disabled veterans, the program is a mandatory exemption granted by the voters and approved by the General Assembly in two thousand and eleven. When the program started, we had forty one veterans that qualified. We now have a hundred and nineteen that qualify for this. And they're ready for review now and I would increase this line item to the budget fifty thousand. So there's something we, we need to look at, I think, because it hasn't been looked at since two thousand and eight.
Agreed, Mr. McClung.
Attention, so.
Any other board comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
It's a great time of the year. I say this every twelve months, but it really is a special time of the year. Enjoy with your family. Be safe and we'll see everybody next year.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Merry Christmas to everyone. Thank you all for coming out here and listening to us and watching us and for your comments. We need your participation in order to move forward. It's it's only going to be what we make it and we have to decide how we want to make it. I think having lived in this county a long time.
I think, having lived in this county a long time, to echo what a speaker said, we're a very, very resilient county. We will survive. We will come out better and we will be stronger. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Merry Christmas, everyone. Evening adjourned.